It's adequate notice of this meeting of the zoning board of the justice. It was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and host our official newspaper and posted on the bulletin board of the school building. Roll call, Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Alada.
Here.
Mr. Bichero.
Here.
Mr. Lando.
Here.
Mr. Lubin.
Here.
Mr. Diorio.
Here.
Mr. O'Neil.
Here.
And Ms. Keith Japsen.
Everyone, please rise for the question. The question is listed in the bag of the United States of America. And either one of which stands what nation under God in which book liberty endeth all? Mr. Kennedy, if you could please give us a quick rundown of tonight's activities, including, uh, at the end of the evening, having an executive session by, by the Senate.
Sure. Um, if that's acceptable, we'll have a short executive session. And remember that, so that newer members, newer members of the public now, the New Jersey law allows us to go into exempt or executive or private session to discuss litigation-related matters. So, uh, and, uh, the law is clear, we can do that. We just have to make a motion to go into that and for the purposes of discussing litigation-related matters. And minutes will be kept made available for the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to do that at the end of the meeting with your permission and the board's consent. And then the other thing in terms of, we had a resolution on tonight, uh, and on B Street. I would suggest is, if it's okay, we hold that resolution until the end of, after executive session. Now, just for the record, we are not allowed to talk about, uh, that resolution in executive session because that's not a litigation matter. But there are some other litigation matters that I want to discuss that I just think I would want you to hear the other litigation matters, um, before we adopt that resolution, if that's acceptable.
That's interesting.
But we just want...
Do we have to go back to the public session after that?
Yeah, we would have to go back.
Or do we have to move to Lakeville?
We would have to, I would, if you go back right after executive session, we'd have to come back to end the meeting anyway. And then we can do it at that, at the adoption of the resolution at that point, if that's acceptable.
You think there's a matter that's pertinent in executive session? Absolutely. So I'm not really sure of that, that, that tendency to talk about that.
Yeah, well, we will just...
Okay, so for the members of the public, I, a lot of this is, so we're going to have an executive session at the end. We're going to have to ask anyone that's in the audience to excuse themselves. We're going to come back and with intent to adopt this resolution that Mr. Kennedy's speaking about. We would open the doors back up for those that are interested to come back in and reopen it back to the public. Can't tell you how long executive session is going to go right now, but generally speaking, I don't think it will be more than fifteen or twenty minutes. So for those that are interested in hearing a resolution get adopted, you'd be welcome to come back in. Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, we want to talk about the case that is, uh, the burger first?
Sure. The first application that was on the agenda tonight was Alvin and Cindy Troy, 415 Tenth Avenue. And, um, they're going to renotice and come back at the next meeting, which is?
April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh. Um, there's technically a use variance component of that, uh, application. And as a abundance of caution, we're going to have them, um, uh, renotice and, and come back.
Okay, was anyone here tonight, uh, to hear their first application for 415 Tenth Avenue, Alvin and Cindy Troy? Okay, so typically they held in April, but they were re-notificated.
Okay.
Okay, great. So with that, we need to do the second, uh, application.
Well, no, we, we have other...
Oh, I apologize, April, I'm speeding ahead here. Other resolutions to, to adopt, correct?
I have a motion to approve the February twenty-third minutes.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll set them.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Bichero?
Yes.
Mr. Lando?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Yes.
Uh, any other, uh, matters, um, uh, resolutions to approve or anything else? So we're ready for the, what is now the first case?
Yes.
Okay. So that is, uh, the applicants, uh, Zainab and Batra, now forward.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the board and public, there's a couple of procedural things. You'll recall, uh, this application, the first hearing was November tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And then the, uh, second, uh, public discussion on this was February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. And, uh, you'll recall at the last meeting, there was, uh, some discussion about, uh, the possibility that the plans were going to be, uh, I think in the words of the applicants, slightly modified or changed. And there was some concern raised about, uh, sufficiency of, of the opportunity to review plans in advance. So out of abundance of caution, Mr. Shipers, on behalf of the applicant, consented to extend the timeframe within which the board had to act and carry it until tonight. So we thank everybody for the cooperation and effort, and revised plans have been, uh, submitted. So let's just mark that into the record. I have and April will, I believe we're up to A seventeen. And A seventeen is going to be, um, uh, variance plan. And it's dated February ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And it's last revised March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. So that will be A seventeen. And we're going to mark as A eighteen. These are the revised architectural, uh, plans. And it's, uh, dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. It's four sheiks. It's prepared by Mary Hearn. And it is dated, uh, last revised March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And, Mr. Chairman, I was nitrogening on A seventeen, uh, the variance plan. I should note for the record that that's prepared by KBA Engineering Services. And then I think we have a couple more things to add into the record. Uh, my notes show the, the B three from the board side. So B three is going to be a certification from Board Member Lubin that he reviewed the, uh, tape or transcripts of the November tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. So that will be B three. And B four is a certification from Board Member O'Neil that he also reviewed the tape or listened to the transcript of the November tenth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, meeting. So we'll mark as B three and B four certifications. And again, Mr. Chairman, I always say this, but I always mean it. I thank the board members for, uh, listening to that one. Uh, because it's not always easy, it's not always fun, but it's very important, particularly on applications that are, um, are extended. And we also, uh, you know, we call on, um, Mr. Lubin and Mr. O'Neil. If there's ever anything that you say, hey, by the way, like, you know, if you talk to the side, you know, we don't hear on the tapes at all. When there's two people talking, you know, so those are why we always say, hey, one person at a time, because we want things to be easy like that. And last but not least, we're going to swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you are the zoning officer of the great borough Belmar. You are a construction official and fire official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providing will be the truth and best you know to help you guide?
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I think we left it off with Mr. Shipers about to, um, talk about his, his proposal. Is that correct, Mr. Shipers?
Yeah, I think so.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, we need to shape her. She has a shape of her husband, Elmar, and his friends. On behalf of the applicant, Steve, behind me, at the table, my engineer planner, Joseph Kishuba, far, at the table, Mary Hearn. I think, uh, they should both be sworn, as well as, uh, Zainab, I think, behind the first row. They were probably previously sworn.
Sure.
Whatever you want to do.
You know, we'll do it again since it's a new year. So, uh, Mary Hearn, just state your name and address for the record.
Mary Hearn, licensed architect, one zero zero seven Sweet Bee Main Street, Belmar.
Okay, and, Mr. Kociuva?
Joseph Kishuba, K O C I U V A, KBA Engineering Services, that's one.
All right, and Mary Hearn, you are, uh, going to be testifying in your capacity as a licensed?
Architect.
And, Mr. Kociuva, you will be speaking in your capacity as a licensed?
Uh, professional engineer, professional planner.
Okay, if you all could both raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
And you? And, uh, Phil, do you want me to swear on your part?
Yeah, I want to.
Okay, um, come on forward and just, uh, you can both state your names, please.
Batraz, I'm in.
Okay, and spell your first name.
B A T R A Z.
B A T...
R A Z.
R A Z. And last name?
K A Z I N E T O.
E T O D?
V.
I'm sorry.
V.
E T O V?
Yeah.
Got it. And ma'am?
Um, Zeynab Abdouka Faro.
And spell your first name?
Z E Y N A N D.
N A?
B.
B.
Like boy.
Got it. And last name?
Um, um, get ready.
That's hard for us. A B D U L K A F A R O D A.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, A B D U L?
Thank you, Bob. A B D U L K A F A R O D A.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if you could raise, raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Swear, yes.
All right, just say yes for the record.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so both witnesses are sworn. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Shipers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was going to say, ladies and gentlemen, of this whole gentleman and board, tonight, uh, we appreciate your continued dependence and attention to our matters. Uh, briefly bringing us back to speed, we were here previously. We were going to proffer, um, a reduction of, uh, we'll hear from the engineer and architect, approximately two point three three feet of the overall depth of the building. And that had, uh, positive effect, which take a, through the interest here, which was to eliminate variances, eliminated the building coverage, uh, or, I'm sorry, lot coverage variances. And it also decreased the, uh, F A R to a double-digit number from where it previously existed as a three-digit number. It also likely increases the rear yard setback, um, of the building making. The, um, project from our perspective, a, um, more attractive, uh, project. We, uh, I think the experts listened at the first testimony, took another look at it. When I got the job, we looked, uh, I took a look at it with them. And with the scope trying to reduce amounts, uh, of variance and intensity of variance was the goal. This is the revised plan that we have come up with. As you recall, my clients bought the property, I believe, in two thousand twenty. Um, with respect to this street, this street, uh, I submit is a street that should be in transition. Uh, as we've been fortunate in the last thirty years, somewhat as a observer and participant, our town has gone through a slow, methodical catharsis, phoenix regeneration, principally from the ocean to the west. Notwithstanding the forefather thirty years ago thought it was going to come from Main Street East. It is not. It has come from the ocean west. And, uh, I want to focus your attention not only on this property, its surrounding property, upon your collective knowledge, streets like fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, ocean to A, A to B. And see how we've progressed. We've also dealt with very challenging, challenging twenty-five hundred square foot lots. We remember the element fifty by fifty. We remember a lot of small ones down by Surf and Eighteenth Night Money. These are lots where people are not selling, the contiguous lots next door. There's no additional land to gain. And we are in a, of a situation, and will continue to be in a situation, where this town's either going to improve and thrive or dwindle and stay the same and be kept. We've heard testimony over the years from some people here of our aging housing stock, uh, our aging population, our need to rebuild, renovate, and rehabilitate. And this property is only a twenty-five hundred square foot property. It's sandwiched between other small properties. And I commend prior to my apartment, Mary Hearn, Joe Kishuba, my clients, and George Muyel, having foreseen the, the, uh, foresight and the design site. We try to construct a humble building that should fit there, fit well. The B four variance, as we know, we need to decide, you need to determine whether the site can accommodate what they're requesting. Think in your minds, how many of your homes have been built it? You admire, you appreciate who you want to live in, and you want to encourage. Much under twenty-five hundred square foot. Think about how many times you would encourage someone to spend sizable funds that come into this town, purchase a twenty-five hundred square foot lot, with its challenges. We are bringing people into town who are willing to take risks in neighborhoods that are still developing, neighborhoods that still may remain rental units, neighborhoods that still may cause, I won't use the term havoc and chaos. We all know what rental units do, work down, our municipal services, our neighborhoods, and the ability for them to retard growth, stunt growth, and show redevelopment. These people are pioneers, like the pioneers thirty years ago, who took chances, took risks, put their checkbooks where their money, where their mouth was, trying to make Belmar a better town than it is today. That's our application. They've come back with a stronger application. And it's my privilege to call Mary Hearn first, everyone first.
Good evening.
And you all, let me just do one last procedural thing. I apologize, April, for the record, all seven, um, actually, we have big numbers here, but, uh, is everyone here eligible to vote?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Uh, Mary, I'm going to try to say less at this juncture. And when you move forward, uh, you were here in the first hearing. You testified with the board, you presented your initial architecturals. You've made some changes, some amendments. Please take the board through them. Reference your new diagrams, your documents, for information for their benefit. Thank you.
Right, if you want to follow along, what we've done to change the home is sat down with Zainab and Patras and beat them up as best I could and said that I wanted to take out of the house whatever we possibly could live with, having heard some concerns about the size of the house. And we removed two foot, four inches. So Phil just mentioned two point three three feet, exactly that, two foot, four inches off the desk of the house. And we removed it from the back of the house. So we left the front of the house exactly as it was, exactly in the same exact place. The balcony at the front, the parking at the front, the front setbacks did not change. The side setbacks did not change. The rear setback increased by two foot, four inches. And in doing so, we've eliminated two foot, four inches from the first floor rear bedroom, from the second floor dining area, and from the master walk-in closet. So they're the furthest back rooms.
Say it again, two foot, four inches was eliminated from several rooms, including?
First floor bedroom, rear bedroom.
I'm sorry, first floor bedroom.
Rear bedroom.
Rear bedroom.
The second floor dining area.
Got it.
And the master walk-in closet on, on the half-story.
Thank you.
And for those keeping track, and it's important, the building coverage reduces from what we proposed last time at fifty point four percent to forty-eight point seven percent. The impervious coverage or lot area, lot coverage reduced from fifty-six point seven percent to fifty-four point eight percent. The floor area ratio reduced from one hundred point eight percent to ninety-four point two percent. The rear yard setback increased by...
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just want to, um, I would say ninety-six point four on this drawing. And the number you stated was different.
On?
To the proposed, uh, unless I'm looking at the one, but, uh, ninety-six point four is the F A R.
Are you referring to the end of the year?
Yeah.
It was just three different ones.
The one that has the overhead, um, this one?
So mine are correct?
Okay, could you please, and last, the board members could please revise their copies. And April, if you could please note for the record, we're, we're cutting on that, we just did. On, on our drawings, um, the actual F A R indicated ninety-six point four, uh...
That's on the engineer's drawing.
Our architect is, is indicating that we should correct him.
What? Mine does indicate ninety-four point two.
Ninety-four point two.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, I, I think because that's a reduction, um, I think it's, it's, it's a problem than with the other ones.
Yep.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And, um, I'm sorry, you were saying?
Yep, the rear yard setback increased from twenty-five point zero feet to twenty-seven point three feet. The overall, I don't want to go too fast.
Okay.
Right, the overall gross size of the home reduced from two thousand seven hundred thirty-one square feet to two thousand six hundred and forty-one square feet. And the overall net livable area of the home, which is how you base floor area ratio, reduced from two thousand five hundred and twenty-two square feet to two thousand three hundred and fifty-five square feet. So we still are requesting variances for building coverage and for floor area ratio. However, we would eliminate the need for the variance for lot coverage, impervious coverage, because fifty-four point eight is now proposed where fifty-five maximums allow.
Mary, you also, I believe, talked with the applicant regarding the, um, design and layout of the first floor study area.
Mm-hmm.
Previously, there was a closet within the study.
Right.
Uh, I think we had concerns, or the board may have had a concern, public may have a concern, that this was something more than a three-bedroom home. Uh, you redesigned that portion of the first floor, is that correct?
Yes, simply made the access to that closet from the hall, not directly from the study.
So that now becomes a usable hallway closet for, uh, for businesses that are more heavy posts, winter posts.
For homes.
Groves, things of that nature.
Yes.
And the study is not, uh, does not possess any interior closet space, correct?
That's correct.
And from your perspective and your testimony and your account, this is a three-bedroom, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five square foot livable space, two and a half story structure, correct?
Correct.
You have anything else to add?
Uh, the aesthetic didn't change. So the, um, the outside looks identical, but for the depth of the home, the roof line stayed the same. The finishes stayed the same, um, and the front of the property stays the same. So the proposed parking remains as it was, uh, proposed last time.
That's all I have with Ms. Hearn, unless she has any further comments to add.
Not, not this one.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn. Mr. Shipers?
Thank you, sir. Uh, next witness would be Joseph Kishuba.
We might, um, want a question, um, regarding the...
I can do it at the end?
I apologize, uh, I didn't realize that you might want to speak, so please, um, we recognize, um, uh, Mr. Kennedy.
Sure, this is Mr. Michellini, and, uh, do you want to cross-examine?
I, I think, I think, yes.
Yeah.
I think we're not going to, we'll let him do that now, rather than until the end.
Yeah, and just, um, any of your parents one more time, so everyone gets up to date on any of your clients you represent.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Joseph Nicolini from Alley Sherman and Nicolini Bridge, New Jersey. I represent, uh, Donnie and Bruce in Leary, who own a house just a couple of floors down.
Could you give us the address of that house?
Yeah, what is the address?
Two fourteen fifteen.
Two fourteen fifteen.
All right, thank you.
Is that directly next door or?
No, it's two, a couple of houses, three houses there.
It's the third house.
To the west. Facing the property.
Third house west on the, on the north side of the street.
Third house west on the north side.
You are correct.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Hearn, just a few questions. The, um, the, uh, in terms of the floor area ratio, it's going from, it's going from twenty-five, twenty-two square feet to twenty-three, fifty-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what is permitted in the zone?
Seventy-eight percent.
So how many square feet would that be? I think it's nineteen fifty, but is that?
It's exactly nineteen fifty.
All right, so you're still over four hundred and five square feet.
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, what percentage is that of nineteen oh five? That's more than twenty percent, not quite nineteen percent, something like that. It's a pretty significant percentage.
Well, it's four hundred square feet over two and a half stories.
I, I understand that. Uh, but it is still four hundred square feet over the floor area ratio. Why is Mr. Kishuba's number wrong and your number right? If you know, maybe you don't know.
I, I don't.
Okay, so how do you know that you're right and he's wrong?
Because I double-checked mine.
Okay, and he must have only checked his once, right?
I think that he was fed numbers. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I want him to testify to it. I think he was fed my earlier numbers that were estimates. From me.
So, uh, I realize the lot coverage is gone. You still have a floor area ratio of four hundred and five, uh, feet over. Um, and how many other variances remain? I know some of them may be limited, but how many other variances are there?
Well, I didn't, I don't...
If you know.
Well, I don't have a chart because the planner took that rule on this application. I'd actually rather him...
Yeah, that's fine. I can ask him that question.
Yes.
Just trying to figure out how many other variances remain. And you mentioned the study that you eliminated the direct access to the closet that was in the study because, uh, because it could be used as a bedroom or be looked at as a bedroom with that closet in there, correct?
I changed the door because I was told to.
Okay, um, but you always saw it as a study.
That's all I see it as now.
Okay, but it still could be used illegally as a bedroom, correct?
You can put a bed anywhere in a house.
Right, and you have a whole full basement that could be full of beds in this house if people choose to do it, even though it wouldn't be legal, correct?
Would not be legal.
But it could be done and...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm at some point going to object to the illegality question that we know any house that could have a bedroom or unfinished attic. I think this is somewhat of a silly line of questioning. If beds can go anywhere, if unfinished attic in an unfinished basement, it's really not what we're here for.
I tend, I tend to agree that it's getting us off the topic. I mean, I, I just...
Yeah, I won't ask any more questions about that. I had a question, um, about the, what was said last time. I believe you said last time that if the half-story, this is, this is under the definition of the ordinance that you've talked about, the half-story is the, the top story, right? And, um, just for sake of me understanding it, from the floor to the peak of that half-story, how, how, how many feet is that?
To the peak of the roof or to the ceiling?
Uh, to the inside, ceiling and to the roof, if you could give me both of those.
Ceiling is eight feet at its, at its highest.
All right.
That's not the entire half-story. And from the walking surface of the half-story to the top outside peak of the roof is approximately eleven feet, four inches.
Okay, all right. Uh, so from the outside, if you're looking at it from the outside, you're going to see essentially eleven feet, four inches.
Above the, you can't see where the floor is.
Right, above that floor, okay. I thought you said, and I could be wrong about this half-story, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you said that if the attic was not habitable, that it wouldn't be counted in floor area ratio, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna read you the definition of floor area and see if I'm wrong about this, because I, when I look at the ordinance, I see something else. And I'll represent, I'll read it directly from the ordinance. Floor area shall not include the floor area of non-habitable addicts, except that one hundred percent of addicts are top stories of a building, which meets the definition of a half-story, as defined herein shall be included. You indicated that it does meet the definition of a half-story.
It does as designed.
Right, so therefore, even if it's non-habitable, it would be included?
No, if you remove the stair going to it, then it's not habitable and does not get counted in floor area ratio.
Right, but this meets the definition of a half-story, correct? Okay, all right, so it is included.
Yeah.
So even if you, you left the stair in and you used it as an attic, it would be included?
If you left the stair in, I, yes.
Okay, all right, well, you didn't clarify that last time, so that's why I'm trying to figure that out. All right. With regard to the, the additional matters mentioned, I have no further questions, Ms. Hearn, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other objecting attorney, do you have any questions?
No.
And just take, arrange your appearance again, reverted, just for the record, said everyone.
Reverend Andrew Rurs, last name is Spurs, he's my boy, he was our C O I P.
And your client is?
Kate Kattelus, it's states, it's two states.
And who's Kate Kattelus?
It is Ken Kattelus deceased and his mother Agnes Kattelus, and I represent the grandson or the son, depending on how you look at it, and his name is Douglas Kattelus.
And who's Kate Kattelus?
K A T E L U S.
K A T E L U S, thank you.
What is their address, if you don't mind, this person, your address?
It's two ten, it's right next door, two ten.
Oh, he's next, oh, the property.
Directly, directly west of the property.
Yeah, two ten, right next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and now I guess technically we should open it to the public for questions of the, are there?
Sure, if anyone from the public wants to ask Ms. Hearn any questions regarding the design of the house?
And Mr. Chairman, the only other technical rule is if you're represented by attorney, you don't ask questions, right? You ask the questions from the attorney's.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to question Ms. Hearn, now would be a good time to do that. Seeing none, we close that public session or that public question portion and move to.
Mr. Schaefer's next question.
Mr. Kishuba.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kishuba, thank you for coming. I'm going to just turn the floor over to you, and without lingering too much of what Ms. Hearn talked about, I'd like to briefly just talk about your chart a little. Then I'd like to focus you on, from a planner's perspective, the impact you feel of the changes would be from when you last consulted.
Sure, so Ms. Hearn did somewhat steal my thunder a little bit, that, you know, improvements here certainly moving in the proper direction. The coverages have been reduced as a result of the application. It is now conforming lot imperious coverage at fifty-four point eight percent or fifty-five percent is permitted. The building covered has been reduced to forty-eight point seven percent or fifty point four forty percent, as was previously proposed. And the F A R was reduced to ninety-four point two percent, or a hundred twenty-eight was proposed. There is an error on my plan, I do apologize for that. Ms. Hearn is the one tasked with designing the home and establishing what the actual floor area is going to be for, so she is absolutely correct with her number. We had, any correct number, I do apologize, but the number identified at ninety-four point two percent is the active number for the F A R.
So Mr. Kishuba, if you still understand this correctly from the last time, previously there was a variance request for maximum lot coverage, and due to the shift, or the reduction in size of the building, you brought that in, or it is now brought in under fifty-five percent, fifty-four point eight, so therefore, the need for that variance is, has gone away.
That is absolutely correct, we have a seventeen mounted on the board here. You can see site plan wise, it hasn't changed substantially, probably can't even tell the difference, other than the house got two foot four inches shorter, and that got transposed through all of the floors, including the basement area, and reduced the lot coverage, who was slightly over last time, but by shortening the home, that also reduces lot coverage, and it's now.
Understood, understood, were there any other variances that got eliminated as a result of the changes made from the last meeting?
No variances eliminated, the, other than that particular one, but they were improved. The other coverages and F A R were improved.
There was some mitigation against some of the prior requested variances.
Absolutely, absolutely, and from a planning perspective, obviously moving in the correct direction, moving closer to conformity, certainly a benefit to planning. And an increase in rear yard setback, I know there was some questioning concern from neighbors regarding that. So although we were fully complying with the setback in the previous application, or the previous version of it, we've now increased it, so it's now twenty-seven point three three foot rear yard setback. So all proper improvements, we are proposing one parking stall, where two required and zero existed. So from a planning perspective, in my professional opinion, all the testimony I provided is still applicable, and the application is actually an improvement over what had been previously submitted.
Mr. Kishuba, I just wanted to clarify or just make sure that I'm not misunderstanding something here. So the spot that is, today there's zero parking, after construction, there'd be one at its spot, and that spot does conform in terms of width and length, correct?
It does, and it will be clear, it now conforms, when we initially submitted the application.
That's why I'm asking.
It was permitted there, so technically our variance was zero parking.
That's why I'm asking, because I, I thought I had noticed that, that there was an increase in size of the, of the spot resulting in it being one official spot now versus what was going to be one unofficial spot.
But actually, the size.
We recognize zero spots, now we're gonna recognize.
Previously, the ordinance didn't recognize any spots smaller than the front yard.
Right, I know, sure.
So although the stall didn't change in size, it's now recognized as a legal stall.
Right, right, so, so your parking variance request, instead of require, I hope to get this right, and if not, I think it's Ted or somebody straightened me out. Instead of two required, zero supplied, is now two required, one supplied.
Correct.
Okay. Well, it is, it's gonna be curbed right now, so, so that would, was all in other streets.
Zero.
But that's, but that's the nature of the driveway, it's easy to fix. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kishuba, do you have more?
I just have a very question. Mr. Kishuba, are you familiar with a far D four variance, correct?
I am.
And you're familiar with Randolph pound square versus, and it's a Randolph, and the other one is Coventry Square versus Westwood, correct?
Yes.
And in those cases, the particular inquiry of this board is to show that the site will accommodate any problems associated with a proposed use with larger floor areas than permitted by you, right?
Correct.
And I think we've heard objection counsel positively, Ms. Hearn, well, you could build a nineteen hundred square foot house and perhaps not require far variances, did you not?
I heard that, yes.
And you're familiar from your education training, prior testimony, that, you know, a likelihood of nineteen hundred square foot house would have also been a three-bedroom home, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And you're familiar with intensity, density, populations within New Jersey for three-bedroom houses being two point six oh six persons per three-bedroom detached home in the upper median value of homes, is that correct?
I believe that's accurate.
And from your review of a potential nineteen hundred square foot home to a twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-three, whichever calculation you engineers and architects put off for this three-bedroom home, from your perspective, would the intensity of use likely be the same?
It would likely be the same, the four hundred square foot increase, in my professional opinion, would not substantially differentiate that home from the other.
And with the same potential bedroom count of three bedrooms, do you feel that the habitability based upon our New Jersey documents and studies, in particular from Rutgers, would indicate that the use is likely two point six zero six inhabitants in that type of home, is that correct?
I would agree, and specifically that the intensity of a home is really defined by the number of bedrooms, that extra square footage is a house for, for usage of the, of the more air, but the bedroom is really.
And with that, do you feel that this lot, the undersized at twenty-five by one hundred, could accommodate any issues associated with the use of the larger far of this four hundred square foot delta difference?
I do, in, in, in line with the testimony I previously provided before, I agree, and again, having it slightly reduced, my testimony remains, and it's.
Do you see any substantial detriment to the public good allowing this twenty-five hundred square foot giver tank three-bedroom home to be constructed on this lot on this street?
I do not.
Do you see any significant impairment to the Belmar zone plan by having this giver tank twenty-five hundred square foot home develop to conformity with your plan on this street?
In my opinion, no.
Have you also studied the streets that I mentioned previously for this board, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, between Ocean and A, A to B, and we looked at the twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty-one foot lots, and we've seen the two and a half and three-story construction, and the renaissance and the, and rebuild of Belmar over the last twenty years? Have you looked at those homes and have you been familiar with them over the last two decades of your career?
I've, I've been familiar with that reconstruction, I don't have specifics, but yes, I'm familiar with those areas and the reconstruction, although I have not been top of it as long as you, two decades, probably a little longer than mine. I'm at about seventeen years.
With that touche answer, I will ask you, did you see that, see or know of any significant issues where those homes have been at significant detriment to the public good within the first couple of blocks of Belmar, the new homes?
No, I would say the revitalization, rehabilitation, improvement of those homes, the homes more commensurate here and living is certainly a benefit, I don't see any particular detriment from that.
I want to be humble and not cast any spurns to any of the structures in the vicinity of this home at issue. But from your humble planner's perspective, do you feel that this type of project in this block near these lots is a, from a planner's perspective, one, a good project, two, encourages, encourages redevelopment, encourages reinvestment, encourages cleanup and pride and aesthetic beauty on this block? And if I missed any jump in, and if I'm wrong in some public board, I'm wrong.
I would agree, and I provided a testimony previously to the board specifically in improvement and providing a desirable visual environment, which is a purpose.
Thank you, nothing further with that touche moment, I feel my end.
Mr. Green, do you have questions for?
Sure. Mr. Kishuba, just a few questions. Could you have those things you just mentioned, the pride, improvement, desirable visual effect with a nineteen hundred square foot, let's say, two-story home, nineteen hundred fifty square feet, two-story home?
I don't know what that design looks like, but.
Right, wow, let's assume Ms. Hearn designs it, because she does a good job, right? You think she does a good job?
I think she does a good job.
So you think she could, do you think that she could design a home that met the floor area ratio requirement of nineteen hundred fifty square feet? Take the study, make it a bedroom, give her the top floor, and make something that would be a desirable visual effect, that would be improvement to the neighborhood, that would be enhancement to the neighborhood, all those things you can testify about, that could be done, right?
A nineteen fifty square foot home could certainly be constructed.
Yeah.
In my opinion, this is more commensurate with your living, as Ms. Hearn has also testified.
Right, so not only do you have to, according to the case law, indicate that it is, that the, that the site can accommodate what you proposed and what you testified to, right?
Correct.
But the statute itself says it's a special reasons variance, which means that you need special reasons. The statute does say that, does it not?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object to the form of the question.
The statute?
I'm gonna object.
The statute doesn't?
Now. With due respect, I, I think I can put my objection on, if you respond, and then maybe Mr. Kennedy can guide us. If you're gonna refer to a statute, well, I think that statute needs to be read to the end of number two, case law interprets the statute, and the, my planner has testified to two of the seminal cases, which I think Mr. Kennedy and the board are aware of. So with that proviso, I don't want to limit testimony or get in the way of testimony, I just want to make sure the question is properly questioned.
So just to state that Mr. Kishuba went out on a little bit of a limb, I think, for an engineer and planner starting to testify about the law. I think we decided to ask him questions about the law in terms of what the statute requires, he's going to testify as to what the case law requires. I think it's appropriate to ask him what the statute requires, if he doesn't, I think he knows the statute, forty-four fifty-five dash seven subsection, what is it, D?
Subsection four, which has a different standard than what you may have implied.
Right, well, the statute requires special reasons, and that's what I'm asking. So I think I should be able to ask the question, because he went out on a limb, he talked about the case law.
And which statute do you refer exactly?
It's forty-four fifty-five dash D, I can't remember the exact. I'll ask some other questions.
Might be forty fifty-five D dash seventy, is that, I mean, I just wanted to.
I'm not sure it's seventy. Yeah, it is forty fifty-five, forty-four fifty-five D dash seventy, D four, so I think Mr. Schaefer's and I were both correct, it was D and it was four.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully note Mr. Schaefer's objections and let question be asked, and Mr. Kishuba is in a position to answer the question.
Mr. Kishuba, are you compliant with that statute, conflicting with section? Are you compliant with the fact that it requires special reasons?
Correct, and that the case law specifically in Randolph had determined, similar to the coverage you faced, that the special reason standard is applied, however, that the special reason standard should be relevant to the nature of the deviation, because the use is primarily a permitted use in the zone. It's a residential, zone, residential lot, so the court's found that the special reasons apply, but only applies to the deviation, not the entirety.
Thank you, all my questions, my question is only, does the statute require special reasons, not, does, I didn't want you to repeat your case law interpretation.
I bother, I love to repeat.
No, my question is, does the statute require special reasons?
The statute says special reasons.
Okay. And do you agree with the fact that floor area ratio is defined as the sum of the area of all floors of buildings or structures compared to the total area of the site?
Yes.
Okay, and you would read that floor area restriction would affect the aggregate size, height, width, and depth of residential structures in relation to the area in which they're built?
I mean, that's a general determination that doesn't affect all of those considerations in this particular application, such as height, we're fully conforming, but, but yes, in general, I believe that's an accuracy.
So you don't think, if the height is conforming, you don't think that? So you don't think, if the height is conforming, you don't think that floor area restrictions affect the aggregate size, because you're making everything smaller, basically? Which might include the height, even if it's, even if it's within the limitation. You don't agree with that? I don't understand the question. Okay. Well, the question is, if you don't understand it, that's fine, but what I'm getting, I'm trying to see if you agree with the idea that floor area restrictions affect the aggregate size, height, width, and depth of residential structures? Even if you're meeting the requirements, let's say, of those height or width or depth? Because you're, you have a floor area restriction, everything tends to get small or can be small.
I would agree with that, in general, yes.
Okay. And you agree that municipalities seeking to exercise enhanced control over residential development or over aggregate size? Aggregate size, including height, residential structures relative to a lot area, should, should adopt a floor area ratio regulation? Agree with that?
I believe that's why that standard is applied, right?
And that those regulations can only be granted under subsection D, which requires special reasons?
Subsection D requires special reason, per se, per se.
Do you recognize the language that I just read from Commercial Realty versus First Atlantic, one-twenty-two NJ five fifty-six, a New Jersey Supreme Court case? Not an appellate case. Are you familiar with that case?
I'm familiar with the case, I, I do not recall it by the...
You didn't quote that in your testimony, correct?
I did not.
Okay. How many variances remain?
There are six proposed variances.
And just, for the sake of us all understanding what's left and what they are, could we just briefly state what they are?
Sure. There's a variance for the front yard setback of the porch. The porch is permitted to the eight feet forward of the front of the house. We're requesting a room of nine point six seven, I believe. There's a side...
I'm sorry, eight foot forward of the, um?
Of the front yard.
Yes, of the front of the home.
Thank you. So the requirement is nine point six seven, proposed is eight. I'm sorry, proposed is eight, required is nine point six seven, my bad.
You said it. Let me say it again.
Correct. So when, the front yard setback is permitted at nine point six seven on this lot, and we're proposing it with forward of the front yard setback that would be allowable. That's the uniqueness of this design, because it's measured from the front of the house. We could move the front of the house forward if we need, if we want, because we are behind the allowable front yard setback for the house. There's kind of a uniqueness of this design, but yes, would you need relief there? Side yard setback, three point zero eight feet.
I'm sorry, three point zero eight.
Combined, two...
I'm sorry, I said, three point oh eight versus what's required, five. Thank you.
The combined side yard setback, six point one six feet, were ten required. The building covered at forty-eight point seven percent were thirds permitted. The FAR at ninety-four point two percent were seventeenths permitted, and the parking stall, one stall provided, two required.
And that, that parking stall, I'm not sure I understood your testimony before, is that on the property itself, or is that a parking stall on the street?
It is an off-street parking stall on the property itself. My testimony was that there was an ordinance change since the initial application.
So one is provided and two are required, right?
Zero previously.
Right. And that requirement is based on what?
Based upon the number of bedrooms.
Okay, three are required.
Three are required.
I thought three were required.
Three, three bedrooms.
Parking?
Three bedrooms, two. Four bedrooms, three.
Correct. And that's from the residential site improvement standard.
So two are required, but what is provided? So you want your... What about parking in the front yard itself? Is that permitted?
It is now permitted.
It wasn't before, when you came back, when you started initially?
I don't remember, did that date, the order was changed or...
Yeah, when we first submitted, it was not. All right. Now, you mentioned that it makes sense, because one of the goals of zoning was to move things closer to conformity. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't it a goal of zoning to bring properties into conformity, if they can be fully brought into conformity?
I, I believe the purpose is to bring it closer to conformity or conformity.
Right. So you could knock off the top floor of this and perhaps meet the conformity of the FAR requirement, right?
I don't know that that would achieve that.
You testified earlier, you thought something could be designed to achieve that.
The house certainly could be produced to comply.
And you could actually comply with regard to the, the other five variances, you could try to make some compliance even greater with those. I mean, you still have, on FAR, seventy-eight percent versus ninety-four point two, you're still out by a significant amount in terms of the FAR, are you not?
With a lot this small, we equate to one square.
Right.
But...
On a lot this small, I understand. Right, but on a lot this small, all of that makes a bigger difference. The, the, the difference is, both in terms of whether you comply or whether you don't comply, make a big, bigger difference overall, or impact because it is such a small lot. Isn't that true?
My testimony at the previous hearing was that the front yard setback, the front yard positioning of the house and the side yards are not likely to change. On a lot this narrow, we would not expect to go with a narrower home. Side yard setbacks are compliant with the building code and appropriate on a lot this narrow. So essentially, all we're talking about is the extension into the rear yard, which we are, we're more than conforming, have actually reduced. So i- in my opinion, I, I think this is, you know, an appropriately sized home to the other sidelines.
And, I know you talked about other properties in the, in the town, but what else on this, in this block is, is on twenty-five feet? That's going to be two-and-a-half or three-story side. What else on the block?
I'm going to object to the, I'm going to call, I'm going to object to the form of the question. The question was, what other homes on the block will date?
Well, we can say...
Will date.
I'll, I'll rephrase.
Let, let, let Mr. Schechter's...
And that may be the operative point of this application, what hopefully will date.
I'll rephrase the question. I withdraw the question. Mr. Kishuba, what other homes on this block are twenty-five feet and are two-and-a-half or three stories? Any?
I'm unaware of any.
Correct. Okay. What other homes on this block are twenty-five feet wide, twenty-five hundred square feet overall, and two stories? Are there any?
I'm going back to the form of the question. Is he relating it to the, he said a twenty-five-foot-wide house.
No, 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 I didn't say house. I didn't say house.
He said structure or house.
Twenty-five-foot-wide lot, okay. How many twenty-five-foot-wide lots on this block have two-story homes?
Currently, no.
How many twenty-five-foot-wide lots are there on this block?
I believe there are four.
I'm sorry, but is it just four?
Four.
And they all have, I think, one-story homes, based upon your prior testimony, correct?
Correct. I would say one-and-a-half story of the twenty-one, there's twenty-two lots on the block, one of which is a common...
And of those four, they're all one-and-a-half story?
Half-story is a determination from interior, and I haven't been in the homes, but they appear to be one-and-a-half from the exterior. I get out very...
So they're either one or one-and-a-half stories.
Correct.
But none of them are even two stories.
Not to my mind.
So those should be much different than anything that's currently on that block, correct?
I would disagree, because there are two-and-a-half story homes on this lot. You're limiting it in schedule for this particular lot.
Yes, I'm, that is correct. I'm limiting it to twenty-five-foot-wide lots. That's correct. And what was wrong with your, between your and Ms. Hearn's numbers? What did you get wrong?
That was asked and answered previously.
I'm listening. Do you know?
We're going to keep going around six.
If he doesn't know, that's fine.
He's asked previously, testified.
He said he used the wrong number, but I'm asking what it was. If he knows, if he doesn't know, that's fine.
We, we show ninety-six point four on the plan, that was incorrect, it's actually ninety-four point two.
No, I was trying to figure out how you got to that number of ninety-six point...
Again, we did design the home, that was an estimate.
Oh, it was just an estimate. Okay, that's, that's easy. All right, nothing further, Mr. Kishuba, thank you.
Mr. Kishuba, the, the twenty-five-foot-wide homes that counsel, or lots that counsel pointed out to you, did you, you have phones, or you went by them, or you spoke to them over the course of time?
I've looked at them, yes. I don't know that I have phones.
Do you have an estimate as to the age of those structures?
Difficult to say, but they are certainly substantially older homes. From looking at historic area, it, it looks like many of those homes date back to probably the forties. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been substantial improvement to them in that time.
On, on my topic, you read my mind, it's a purr, maintenance, and aesthetic looks. Do you have any comments as to the beauty, maintenance, care, kindness, tenderness, and love that has gone into those homes over the last fifty years?
I'll look at the spot again. I've been looking at them for approximately twenty years, and, you know, in my opinion, they are certainly aged, in need of improvement, and, and older homes. So I can't think of the exact term used, but yes, they are, they're not as aesthetically pleasing as the new construction that has happened to the neighborhood and surrounding.
If I mark, can I mark something down?
Sure. What, what are we up to?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen. And what is eight nineteen?
The photograph of two oh eight, two ten, two twelve, and a portion of two fourteen. Two of the homes represented by the objector turns. One-and-a-half story homes, plus our existing home.
All right. Wait, these are pictures of the objectors' homes?
Yeah, and ours.
All right. So pictures of objectors' and applicants' homes, and by whom was this picture taken?
I think George McGill's office part of it, in, in case, because it came with the file.
All right. Can Mr. Kishuba, for the record, state that that picture is an accurate depiction of existing conditions?
Yes, I believe it is an accurate depiction of existing conditions.
Okay. And before we mark it, and would you please show that to Roberta and Mr. Shani?
And my next one would be, what, eight twenty?
Yeah, just hold on, I'm sorry, Bill.
Thank you.
Just, I have no objection to the photo, but it doesn't show my clients' homes.
It's covered.
Okay.
That's fine. So what, what was that?
That was eight nineteen.
Uh, just, just the subject. I'm turned around.
Just a joy.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to show it's been marked eight twenty. Can you take a look at it?
I'm, Roberta, do you have any objection?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask that before you testify, now, that approach, and certainly, do I have a graph? Thank you. Not yet. Eight nineteen depicted the care, condition, and love of the properties from likely two oh two through two twelve, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And those photos coincide with the testimony you gave both in your first appearance on tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Showing you which were marked eight twenty, because eight twenty appeared to be the houses of the continuation...
I'm sorry, Bill, can you just, what is eight twenty for the record?
The continuation on that side of the homes, I got, I believe, two fourteen, the yellow, one-and-a-half structure home, represented by Mr. McLeeny.
And again, that was taken by Mr. McGill's office?
I believe so, as those came with his file, to me.
And Joe Koshiba, can you testify that those, that picture, that picture is an accurate condition, or accurate existing conditions?
Yes, I agree with that.
All right.
If you could just show that to the two returning to the record.
Do you believe the yellow structure is Mr. McLeeny's client, I believe, two fourteen?
I believe that is two fourteen, correct.
Thank you.
I have no objection.
All right. And Roberta, you have no objection, thank you.
May I approach, Sir George?
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Kishuba.
Mr. Schechter, you kind of moved forward. I was going to give Mr. Brooks the opportunity to question Mr. Kishuba, so...
No question, firm of question.
I just have a follow-up question based on the photos.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Kishuba, the photos that were marked eight nineteen and eight twenty, those show older homes, but not necessarily homes that are in disrepair, correct?
I would need to see them.
So you don't know from just looking at them?
What, what's your definition of disrepair?
Well, obvious disrepair. They look like they're well-maintained, do they not? Including your clients, or Mr. Schechter's clients, correct?
I, I would say that they are certainly not in character with the newer homes in the neighborhood.
But they are in character with the older homes in the neighborhood, correct?
I believe they're in character with the much older homes in the neighborhood.
Right. And some would find that charming, would they not? Isn't that a matter of opinion? Whether or not something is, is beautiful aesthetically or not beautiful, some would find the older homes to be charming, and actually would want to keep those as opposed to big two-and-a-half, three-story new structures.
Calls for speculation, but he can likely answer it with a vague calls for...
He gave his...
The, the beauty is in the eyes of the holder, but he can answer.
Right. Well, he gave his opinion as to beauty, really.
He gave his opinion as to the first main, it's key.
Could we not do this, I mean, it's already the third meeting where we've been going back and forth like this, and I, I just would really like to stay focused on the variances that are being requested and your objections to those variances that are being asked.
No, I, I, I made my point, so I'm done with the question.
Relative to whether it's char, an old home is charming or not, is not relevant to the, to the variances that are being requested of this board. So those questions are just taking this board's time up and the next applicant's time up unnecessarily.
I disagree, because he brought the aesthetic...
Okay, but what's, relative to a variance? That's all I'm asking, Mr. Kishuba.
It's relative.
Your point relevance, I will stand corrected. Charming, whether an old home is charming or not, which variance does that relate to?
I think it relates overall to his testimony, where he talked about one of the reasons that these variances, he testified, Mr. Kishuba testified, that part of the reason that these variances should be granted is because aesthetically, there's going to be a brand-new, beautiful home and property. That's the essence of part of his testimony. I am entitled to question that and to test that. And, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I agree with Mr. Schechter. I think a lot of people would look at these homes and say, you know, some people are going to want the old ones, some people are going to want the new ones. But the fact that he's putting up a new one is not a basis to great variances.
All right. Did you have any questions?
No, no more questions, thank you.
And Roberta, you didn't have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's our application.
I guess we should just ask members of the public?
Yes. Do the members of the public have any questions or comments related to the planner's testimony that we just gave? No, so no members of the public?
Okay.
I'm kidding, I think.
We do have some. Please come out.
I haven't been to one of these meetings before, so I apologize.
That's okay. I'd feel very comfortable. We're all friends and neighbors here, so it's no problem. What we'd like to hear is your name, okay?
My name is Nancy Ostrander, and I live at one thousand C Street.
All right, good evening, and welcome, and thank you for coming to the Belmar zoning board meeting. What we're going to do, which we do to everybody, is just for the record, we're going to swear you in. So if you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, invest your knowledge to help you luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
May I call you Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, Nancy, if you haven't been to a meeting before, there will be a portion at the end where the public...
where the public can make general comments, these questions or comments would be related to the planner's, uh, what he test, his testimony.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure that we focus on that.
Maybe I should be waiting till later?
Yes, that, quite often, it's, it's, it's a very common state.
Okay, um, I was just concerned about really the overall size of the house for the property. Are there zoning laws talking about the square, there's zoning laws that's for footage, right?
Okay, if, if, if it's a planner's question, we can answer that.
Planner, yes.
But that's what an F A, that's the F A R, is the relative size, where in this particular case, uh, let me try and.
You know, you're right, and Mr. Chairman, if I will, yes, Nancy, if I may call you Nancy, each zone in the town has a minimum lot size required. If a new lot were to be developed, some of the lots are existing, but that's generally, there is a, a, each zone has a minimum lot size required.
Okay. The town that I came from, the zoning board always said no, take everything. But that was just their, their policy, that was their practice.
Okay, and, and I, I, I don't wanna steal the chairman's thunder, and I certainly, I want you to ask any questions. And it sounds like you're making a comment, which I think is gonna be a very important comment, but that will come later on.
Okay.
If you have a question for Mr. Kosseba, what?
No, I'm sorry, I'll get back to you.
But definitely, don't, don't leave, there's gonna be a little bit of time.
Okay.
We encourage, we encourage to hear from the public, so please don't be shy, come back up. Okay, with that, we'll close the public questions of the planner and.
I believe Mr. Schaefer's rested on his part, subject to resurrection, correct?
Correct.
All right, so now, uh, Roberta or Mr. Michoni, did you want to proceed?
Sure.
Thank you. And, you know, if you need to sit, all right.
That would be helpful.
That would be.
I don't know, uh, I don't want, I don't want anybody to have to take it.
Okay, is that, that okay? Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect, I was gonna give up my seat.
Actually, uh, I don't think I can sit, also we heard the microphone.
Okay, and if you, if you, and in fairness, if you do need a place to sit, write, write your notes, you can.
If you need people. So I, my witness, uh, my next wit, my first witness, actually, who was here a couple of months, several months now, Samuel Bellamy, uh, and he is a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, so, um, I'll, I'm, we'll get.
All right, so why don't we do this, um, Mr. Bellamy, if you could just state your name and business address, please?
It's Samuel Bellamy, um, my company is Dresson and Robin, our address is one Evertrust Plaza, Suite nine oh one, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Okay, and you, you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, invest your knowledge to help you luck?
I do.
All right, thank you, and just for the record, before your qualifications are noted, you are testifying today in your capacity as.
A professional planner, in Jersey.
Uh, Mr. Bellamy, how long have you had a professional planner's license?
A little over two years now.
Okay, and what is your, uh, what's your education?
I have a master's in city and regional planning from Brockhurst University.
Okay, and obviously a bachelor's of science, you love that.
In environmental planning, correct.
Okay, are you part of any professional organizations?
Uh, I'm accredited with the American Institute of Certified Planners, A I C P certification.
Okay, and have you testified as an expert before any planning or zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Uh, yes, quite frequently, uh, recently in Acton City, Long Island.
And, uh, your employment presently?
I'm a planner with Dresson and Robin, I've been with them for approximately five years now.
Okay, and you're a, a planning and engineering company?
A land use firm, correct.
Okay, and what kind of key projects have you worked on?
Uh, all different, uh, redevelopment to development projects ranging from residential, commercial, industrial, wide range.
And have you also testified as zoning and planning boards outside of Long Island County?
Yes, uh, Jersey City, uh, every other week, uh, Hoboken every other week, and, uh, many other, uh, we just found these in Hudson and, uh, Birmingham.
As well as those down here, correct?
I believe you're an expert in this.
We, we certainly need to tell those credentials, thank you, Dan.
And then just for the record, Roberta, any questions or comments, now, and Mr. Schaefer's?
Um, just basically, what, dear, you indicated a bachelor's, you said, in planning?
Environmental planning.
Environmental, and that was from Plymouth State University in New Hampshire?
That's correct.
And, uh, you attended records for what year?
Uh, two thousand, uh, sixteen to two thousand eighteen.
And that's where you acquired your masters?
That's correct.
And, uh, where do you reside?
Uh, Middletown Township.
Thank you. I'll reserve any more for Cross, thank you.
Middletown Township in Long Island County.
That's correct.
Now, far from here.
No.
So, with regard to this application, have you had a fair opportunity to review the application?
Yes, I have.
And you reviewed the, the, the plans that have been drawn and presented as evidence in this case? Both the initial plans as well as the revised plans that were presented today?
Correct, I did have a chance to review the initial plans and the revised plans, uh, when they were submitted.
Okay, and, um, so why don't you take us through, rather than have me question you, uh, variance by variance? Take us through each variance, starting with the floor area requirement, or floor area ratio requirement variance. And take us through, uh, your analysis of that variance, and what are the plans that got presented?
Sure, um, so I, I have been retained by the leis that reviewed the application and their opinion, a planning opinion. Um, overall, there are six variances, the main one being the D four F A R variance. Um, as you heard, it's, uh, ninety-four point two percent, or seventy-eight percent is permitted in the R forty zone. Uh, there's also bulk C variances that are tied into that F A R variance request. They include the side yard setback, uh, three point oh eight feet on both sides, or five feet's required on each side. Uh, combined side yard setbacks, six point one six feet permitted, or ten feet's required. Maximum building coverage, forty-eight point seven percent, or thirty percent is permitted. Um, minimum parking, one space or two spaces are permitted, and also for that front yard setback, um, the deck extends further, uh, beyond that deep with setback, uh, mark. Um, so with respect to the, uh, F A R variance, uh, both, both requirements are essential in preserving the character, um, and creating the character of the zone. So this board does have the ability to grant D four variances under the statute, um, where special regions are shown. Um, in this case, a D four variance requires that showing that the site can accommodate the increased, uh, and, and problems associated with the increased F A R here. Um, so really, the F A R variance is considered a special reasons variance is, um, due to the fact that it does pose a greater threat to the zone plan than your typical bulk variances, so your setbacks, your coverages. Um, so it does require that, um, enhanced burden of proof. With respect to the F A R variance, uh, they are approximately sixteen point two percent greater than the seventy-eight percent permitted. Uh, that's approximately, actually, it's quick math, uh, four hundred sixty square feet, um, greater than what's permitted in the R forty zone. Um, in addition, they are requesting that the variances relate to setbacks, coverage and parking. Again, these are all variances, bulk variances tied directly to, um, the F A R variance request. And what this adds up to, in my professional opinion, is creating an oversized home on an undersized lot. When I say oversized, I'm, I'm speaking in reference to the zoning requirements. Um, it may not be oversized for homes you see in Belmar, it may not be oversized for the applicant, but in my opinion, it's certainly oversized, um, for what's permitted on the zone for this specific lot. As you heard, there are other undersized lots in the neighborhood, so this is a twenty-five foot wide lot with a lot area of twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, the R forty district requires forty feet of frontage and a lot area of four thousand square feet. Directly to the west of this property are three other twenty-five foot, twenty-five foot wide, um, twenty-five hundred square foot lots. So this is a pattern, um, in, in the middle of the lot here, of these smaller lots, um, that do contain smaller homes. In addition, um, I did have a chance to go out to the site and walk the surrounding area to really get a feel for the character of the area. Um, there were also, um, in my analysis of the, of the tax map, um, two thousand square foot lots, uh, across the street, there were also three thousand square foot lots. Um, and just for reference, uh, it was lots fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, and lot one forty-one, uh, lot one fifteen.
Lot one forty-one, lots.
Fifteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Thank you.
Uh, lot one fifty-one, um, this is the south side of Fifteenth Avenue, uh, lot eleven, there was a twenty-five, uh, two thousand square foot home. And then there were also, uh, lots eight, nine and ten, on one fifty-one, there were three thousand square foot properties. Um, so there are patterns of smaller homes, uh, smaller properties in the surrounding area. And from my analysis, all of these home, all these properties do contain smaller homes, uh, ones that are one, one and a half story bungalow style homes, um, which in my opinion are appropriately scaled given the undersized nature of these lots, um, in the R forty zone. Um, the development regulations of Belmar includes a graduated table for maximum floor area, that's based on lot size. So in this case, um, lots zero to three hundred ninety-nine square feet, um, so our property, the property being twenty-five hundred square feet falls into this category, you're permitted seventy-eight percent building coverage. Uh, when you go up the graduated table to lots four thousand square feet to five hundred fifty square feet, then reduces your F A R to seventy-five percent. And then above that, five thousand fifty-one square feet to six hundred ninety-nine square feet, um, it reduces further to sixty-five percent. Um, so a reason in doing this is to account for undersized lots, so when creating this ordinance, um, Belmar had the foresight to realize that there are undersized lots in these existing zoning districts, and that they do require additional F A R to permit homes that are appropriately sized and, and, um, and, and could be developed on these properties. So this is already something that was accounted for in the zoning ordinance, accounted for increased F A R. Um, what the applicant is doing is now going above what that, um, permitted additional F A R is, um, again, to that, about sixteen percent over that.
Let me just stop you there real quick, just so everybody gets this, so the, the larger the lot, the, the, uh, the smaller the floor area ratio, right?
Correct, and, and floor area ratios are floor area over your lot size, so you may have still a greater, um, buildable area, buildable floor area, but again, that ratio decreases because you're accounting for greater lot.
And the smaller the lot, the larger the allowable floor area ratio. And you, uh, you account that to, how do you account for that?
It, it's, it's really to account for undersized lots in zones, and there are many of them, as I referenced in my testimony so far, um, undersized existing lots in zones.
So the, the greater floor area is already taken account, I think is what you said.
Correct, correct.
So that it allows these smaller lots to, to build a greater amount, uh, overall, compared to the lot size than the bigger lots.
That's correct.
And that's already in the ordinance.
That's correct.
All right, and they're exceeding that by how much? Sixteen percent?
About sixteen percent.
All right, and as a professional planner, do you think that, that wise?
No, and I, and I don't think this site can accommodate that increased, uh, F A R here.
Okay, uh, go ahead, I'm trying not to interrupt you.
No, no worries, um, so, and, and just to reiterate, the seventy-eight percent F A R on this twenty-five hundred square foot lot does permit, um, allowable floor area of, uh, one thousand nine hundred fifty square feet. So this is, that can be developed with a home, um, and, and in my opinion, can be built, um, within that permitted F A R, even though this is an undersized lot.
And you could have a three bedroom home, that would be an adequate three bedroom home?
You may have smaller bedrooms, but I, I think you could fit a three bedroom home within that.
And you still could have a full basement of, uh, you know, whatever that footprint is, correct?
Based on my understanding of the ordinance, the cellar area here isn't counted in the floor, so you might be able to have.
So you, you could have that because it's not counted as part of the nineteen hundred fifty.
That's correct, that's, that's additional area, that, that can be used.
So you have another, almost another thousand square feet of usable area, even though it's not counted in the, in the F A R calculation, correct?
Uh, yeah, it was whatever the, the building footprint was.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I did have a chance to review the, uh, the borough's master plan, and in two thousand six, um, there was a recommendation, um, that the planning board should consider the development and implementation of a floor area ratio F A R ordinance that would limit the maximum permitted F A R in lot coverage for properties used for residential purposes. Um, in two thousand sixteen, there was a reexamination report, um, again, this, um, this called out that recommendation from the, the two thousand master plan that's still being relevant. And in two thousand thirteen, so less than ten years ago, I would say somewhat recent, um, these development regulations adding in that floor area ratio table that I spoke of was implemented. So this is something that the town saw as an issue, um, they, they accounted for it, they inserted, inserted, in my opinion, um, an appropriate, a graduated floor area table, and this was to account for, like, what you have here, undersized lots and allowing for permissible, um, new development on those properties. Um, the ma, the two thousand master plan, um, also identified as an effective.
Two thousand master plan?
Correct, two thousand. Um, the protection of the integrity of the borough's single family residential districts from overdevelopment is essential to the long-term future of Belmar as a quality, short community, uh, that's page twenty-one. And I'm sorry, it's master plan reexamination report.
And would this be, in your opinion, as a professional planner, given the size and the scope and the six variances and the nineteen, sixteen percent additional F A R, would this be overdevelopment as contemplated by the, the master plan?
Absolutely, exceeding that maximum F A R, uh, directly results in the overdevelopment of this, um, property and, and establishing a family district here.
Good.
Um, so, so next, um, so just wrapping up the F A R variance, in, in my opinion, the site cannot accommodate the increased floor area permitted on the property. Uh, moving into the bulk variances.
Well, before we go there, there was testimony that the F A R variance, uh, that the, the home could be built three stories, and if you didn't have stairs to the top story, that wouldn't count for that space, even though it's arguably a half story under the floor area definition. Do you agree with Ms. Hearn's testimony or disagree?
Um, under my review of the zoning ordinance and the applicable definitions for floor area, half story, um, and attic space, um, the floor area is directly tied to the half story definition, which doesn't reference, um, stairs or no stairs or, uh, habitability or unhavable space. Um, so it's directly related to the height of the ceilings and the area beneath it. Um, so regardless of the habitability, regardless of the stairs, in my opinion, um, that space is counted as floor area and be added to the floor area ratio.
Regardless of whether it's, uh, I don't know.
Correct.
And that's because the definition is only including the idea of stairs, is it, correct?
Not from what I saw, in my view.
Okay, all right, go ahead, I will.
Um, so moving into the bulk variances that are being requested, um, they did remove the lot coverage variance, but there still is, in my opinion, a substantial, uh, variance for the maximum building coverage. Again, they're proposing forty-eight point seven percent, uh, where thirty percent is permitted. So you're over eighteen point seven percent, which is approximately four hundred sixty-eight square feet here. Again, this, this larger, um, building massing or, or building, um, footprint does add into your F A R, uh, calculation, so it is, uh, relevant here. Um, and what it essentially allows you to do is, what they're proposing is to go deeper into lot, um, than, than what is permitted. Um, it extends further beyond the adjacent buildings, which in my opinion does have a substantial, um, impact to those, uh, the existing development patterns in this area in, in reference to.
But they, they cut off two point four feet, is it still going substantially deep and is it still a problem?
Uh, in my opinion, yes, and I, and I think the two, two point four inches that were taken off is really a de minimis, um, change given the, um, uh, substantial oversized nature of their proposal.
Yes, two point four inches, not two point four feet.
Um, as far as the front and side yard setback, um, again, the front yard setback, um.
Can we just correct that, because we had this before too, it's two feet, four inches.
Two feet, four inches.
Correct. Okay, we said that before as well, and you're wrong. Two feet, four inches has been removed from the higher application, bringing the rear yard setback. Where twenty-five is required, twenty-seven, one thirty-three is what's been proposed.
Oh, we're talking about in relation to the, uh, in relation to something else though, right?
Um, I, I could, I think I could address the chairman's question.
Okay, so you were talking about rear yard setback, and you called two, the two feet, two point, two feet four inch reduction de minimis, and it appears that the rear yard setback, where twenty-five is required and twenty-seven is proposed, it's two point three, three feet or two point four inches over. So two point four, going from five, well, let's just call it an half, right? Going from, from five feet down to two and a half, you call it a de minimis reduction. And there were only two point five over, which I guess by definition would also be de minimis.
They were, they were, I believe, complying with the rear yard setback from the start at twenty-five feet, if I'm not mistaken. if I'm not mistaken. So now they are proposing that it, they show two feet, uh, four inches.
You mean existing?
No, proposed.
Well, that was reduced by, by two feet, four inches, so I don't understand.
If that's from the structure, so the rear yard setback is enhanced, it's even greater.
Right, that's, that's...
Non-variance.
That's what I'm getting at.
My question wasn't about variance, my question is about variances, not about the rear yard setback.
Okay, very good, okay.
Well, I think his answer was about...
Okay, I, I...
Yeah, I think I do want to extend this conversation a little bit more because it is, is important. Um, so they are complying, now proposing, um, an additional, uh, two feet, four inches beyond what's required from them. Um, but again, this is all in perspective of the overall development. So when you have a substantial FAR variance, that ties into your setbacks, your coverage, your height. So all those elements, um, tie into this. And then you're also requesting side yard setback variances, front yard setback variances, substantial building coverage variance. So even though you're proposing a, a, uh, compliant or extended, um, rear yard setback, in my opinion, the overall development is still a substantial amount. Um, and really what this allows, you, you can push or pull a building. Um, I think the proposal here is essentially bursting at the seams. It's, it's extending out beyond every aspect except for the rear yard there, but it is fully backed to the property, deeper than the adjacent buildings, and built all the way up as, as you can go, and beyond what you can go, what you're permitted to go here.
And the, the two point, two feet, four inches, after you take that off, you still have a building coverage issue of four hundred sixty-eight square feet, right?
That's, that's correct.
And that's eighteen point seven percent over allowable building coverage, correct?
Yeah, and I would call that a substantial...
And that's even after the removal of that two feet, four inches.
So that's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, as, as far as parking goes, they are providing one space where two spaces are required. Again, this directly ties to the intensity, the number of bedrooms in this property. Um, so in my opinion, part of showing that a site can accommodate what you're proposing, for in this case of a, a single-family residential home, um, should, showing that can provide compliant parking on the site would essentially help to show that it can accommodate the impacts. Here, it's not providing, um, compliant parking. Again, the parking is proposed in the front yard, um, on their testimony, I, I think it's now permitted. Um, but it is still against, in my opinion, the character of the area. Um, you're now removing front yard landscaping space, which the adjacent properties have, and you're gonna have a parking space directly, um, in front of the home, which is inconsistent, um, with the, the surrounding development. Um, so overall, in my opinion, there is a substantial detriment to the public good here. Again, the proposed project is creating an oversized, single-family home on an undersized lot and would have substantial impacts to the neighbors this second. Um, with that, I do have a couple exhibits, um...
Okay, uh, uh, as you're getting ready, just a point of order. Uh, you, you folks, this case began at six fifteen. Uh, at eight fifteen, we're gonna break and hear the next case. And then when that case is finished, if you guys want to stay and come back, as long as we don't exceed, uh, nine forty-five PM, okay? But this is, recognize, this is the third time we're here, and you're ready to go what looks like it's gonna exceed two hours. So I, I just ask that you use our time a little bit more efficiently and we get to the bottom of this so we can, uh, take a, take a vote on it. So please keep that in mind, I hope you, I hope you object, but as, as people who have been sitting in the audience waiting for a case to end, I do not want to ask these guys that are, the second case tonight has to come back at eight. So at eight fifteen, we're gonna break, reconvene at eight twenty, and we'll hear the second case for the night. If this case hasn't completed, we'll give you guys the opportunity to come back on or just to turn to another case.
All right, so we're gonna mark in, and, um, let me put with mine, you know, a board member and our board secretary. So Mr. Mickelini, let's look at this one. We're gonna mark, we have not marked any, we can do yet. All right, so we're gonna mark this as O, compliance last name is Leary one. And since I identify what O, Leary one is, I've...
I have the photo log, um, I could see if you got one for the board if you need.
All right, so O, Leary one, this value of photo log for that's...
What about this, this sounds a little... Do you have...
I have one.
It's a photograph.
It's like this. I don't have the photo log.
No, you have it.
Okay, well, here, um, I'll share, let me, we'll, we'll give this to you. And so O, Leary one is a shadow study, and by whom is that prepared?
Um, Dresner Robin.
All right, that, that's your firm?
That's correct.
All right, and is there a date on it?
There was, uh, revised for today's date, uh, March twenty-third.
So March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, so that's O, Leary one. And we'll mark as O, Leary two. Um, what is this?
Um, that's a photograph log, um, from my site visit. I believe it stated October twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five.
Can we get on with this, um, so we can start getting some traction? Um, we've seen a lot of pictures, we know the neighborhood, most of us have driven by or ridden our bikes by the location, so what, what points are we counting?
And let me just, what, what are the dates of this, March twenty-third?
Uh, twenty twenty-third.
Okay, by whom, by whom were these pictures taken?
Uh, myself.
Okay, and, uh, today or...
March, I'm sorry. The photos were taken back in October twenty-seventh.
So we marked that O, Leary two, did you get this bill?
I marked it, okay.
Why don't you shoot that?
Sure.
That's your same thing.
Um, so, so getting into, um, the two exhibits, um, the photograph log shows those adjacent properties that are twenty-five feet wide, um, twenty-five hundred square feet. So those are what I would say are in scale and, and should be referenced when considering the property, uh, the overall scale of the adjacent properties, um, similar sized lots, um, similar existing development pattern here. Um, so I, I know the planner testified to the, the beauty aesthetics. I think the scale here is very important and is what essentially bulk requirements are, um, are in place to preserve the, the development pattern and scale and appropriately sized, uh, sized property, uh, buildings on, on the properties. Um, so I do include the, uh, adjacent properties, um, also the property on the south side that I referenced, and then further down the, uh, lot to the east on Fifteenth Avenue, some other twenty-five foot wide, um, twenty-five hundred square foot lots. As you can see, all those building, all those properties are developed with a one and, one and a half story bungalow style home, which in my opinion is appropriately scaled, um, to the undersized nature of the lot. The other exhibit that I did prepare is the shadow study. Um, this shows the proposed building in context with the surrounding homes. Uh, the light green shadow represents, um, what's, what the additional shadow impacts would be, um, on, on top of what's there today. Um, I did have a chance to revise this, include that two-foot increase setback that they're proposing. Um, once, the, the reduction, the shadows shown in dark green there. So it really is, and, and this is why I characterized it as a de minimis, um, change. It, it really, it, it took away very little of the shadows. Um, as you can see from March, you have almost complete shadows in the adjacent...
This, this, excuse me a second, Mr. Kennedy, could you please give the board some guidance regarding, um, uh, light, air, and, and view, and whether that's a legitimate, um, cause...
Sure, I mean...
Either approve or deny particular variance?
Yeah, I mean, typically airspace and light is, is a factor that one would consider in, in overall application, and, uh, as is always the case, and this is, um, the shadow study. So it, it is a factor.
Okay, now, given the fact that this is thirty-five feet in a thirty-five permitted zone, the relevance of these shadows that are being shown here is only related to, um, the, the depth of the structure as opposed to the height of the structure. Is that some reasonable...
We disagree with that because of the testimony of Mr. Dolan, related to the FAR. The FAR requirement lets everything...
Right, but there's, there's the ability to build a thirty-five foot home without variance, so let's just...
But with that, would come a, a reduction from either the back, the front, the sides?
Potentially.
Or not finish that, correct?
No, in my opinion, anytime you have that half story, it's, it counts as floor area.
So you'd have to bring the house down to two stories?
Wait, 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 we're getting conflicted.
Well, well, one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check the testimony. Right now, we have Mr. Mickelini, and I love his, his abilities and his style. But he's testifying now as the planner and the engineer, and what has to happen? You have to break it down, and he's testifying that shadow study is cool, it's fun, it's marvelous, and it's winning. But he's not qualified, he's not the expert.
I'll, I'll be happy to ask...
All right, we, we will continue. I was asking Mr. Kennedy, from, from a legal point of view, whether, whether there's, um...
Airspace and open light is always a consideration, but we will, and later on, we will be discussing it in terms of...
Right, and if this was a height variance, I think that these would all be relevant. But given there's no height variance requested, I, I, I question the legitimacy, except for the depth. I said except for the depth part of that, uh, in terms of...
You know, I mean, in conjunction with variance relief, but we can hear about that.
All right, but I just don't want to be, I, I don't want to make the, purport to be misrepresented to, relative to the shadow study that's being proposed here, because if it is something that we're to contemplate, we're only to contemplate the fact that the building could be perhaps a little bit shorter, but the shadows would be identical if we're thirty-five foot structure. And I don't think anyone could argue with that. I mean, that's just the truth.
With all due respect, I would like to ask the witness some questions about your comments because I, 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 I think we disagree with that.
Wait, wait, I'm saying, they can shorten it and go higher and stay thirty-five feet. There's nothing requiring them to go lower than thirty-five feet. If they wanted to make a nineteen hundred fifty square foot, thirty-five feet high, they could. This is four hundred feet, that's under debate, right?
We'd have to bring in the size that...
Maybe they'd have to shorten it by five feet, let's say. Okay, so, so my point about the shadow study is, they have the right to build a thirty-five foot home. The shadow that we're talking about would just be slightly short, that's all. And that's all, that's all I'm saying, I just want, I want, I don't, I want the word to clearly understand.
And I would, and I would say that, that, and this is not testimony, the case that I read from earlier, which is a New Jersey Supreme Court case, talks about FAR in terms of the aggregate of all those things...
Mr. Mickelini, can I say something? This is the third meeting now, okay? And you're dancing around the fact that you don't, there's some issue with the height of this building that's not being spoken, and yet we all know that's the issue, okay? So they have the right to build a thirty-five foot home. I understand the relevance that you're saying, well, if they went smaller, maybe they could build a thirty-foot home. You're absolutely right, but, but we're not gonna require them to build a thirty-foot home. They have the right to build a thirty-five foot home, don't even have to ask us.
I understand that, I'm not, I'm not...
Okay, so, so, do you realize how much time we're spending here, though?
But it's very important because it relates to the testimony...
Please continue, and then let's, Mr. Schaefer cross it now. I, I apologize for the delay, but I definitely wanted to have the conversation since you brought up, uh, the shadow.
So Mr. Bellamy, if you would, briefly, address how the shadow study, and in particular, the height relates to the FAR variance in this situation.
Yeah, and, and light, air, and open space is one of the purposes of planning, I would say. Um, so it is certainly relevant here, in my opinion. Um, and I did run the calculations, so if you had permitted building coverage, permitted FAR, either if you had a thirty-five foot permitted height, you would have to reduce the building twenty-five feet. So that's a substantial amount to get down to your building coverage permitted, your FAR permitted, and retain the thirty-five foot building height. So in my opinion, from doing a lot of these shadow studies, I think that would remove almost entirety of the shadows from the rear yard and the areas would certainly be, uh, although, I'll be taller, more consistent with the development pattern in terms of the building footprint and, uh, and how far deep it goes into the lot. So what they're proposing today, um, again, it's all relative, uh, your setbacks, your coverage, your height. Um, it, it, it blocks light, air, and open space, um, to the adjacent properties almost entirely in the morning of March, and shifting to really the adjacent property at one PM in June, it's a little less of an impact, it's more directly on the adjacent neighbor. Um, again, covering almost entirety of their rear yard. And then again, in September, the shadows are, are back to covering almost entirety of those, uh, three adjacent properties. So in my opinion, there is a substantial detriment, um, to the public health, safety, and general welfare here. There is a substantial detriment to light, air, and open space on the adjacent neighbors and, and should be considered with the, uh, FAR variance request.
And with regard to the existing structure, does that create any shadows, given its current height?
Yeah, the existing shadows are accounted for. You could actually see them in dark gray, which is why the green shadow doesn't go directly, um, with the, go directly to the, the yellow proposed building. Um, so the, the existing shadows are accounted for with the shadow study.
And is this something that you've done before? How many shadow studies have you done?
Uh, many, many shadow studies, uh, forty plus, I would say.
Okay, and what is the general purpose of a shadow study?
Um, it's really to look at the massing of the building, looking at the building footprint, and, um, and reviewing impacts, light, air, and open space on adjacent properties, um, when you're, when you're trying to balance out bulk variances and, and looking for site accommodation. So with, in my opinion, with these shadow impacts, that really the site can't accommodate the, um, additional massing being proposed.
So I, I, I want to understand, your testimony was that if, if the property, if all the bulk variances were eliminated, but it was still thirty-five feet high, that would, uh, create much less shadows, is that correct?
I, I think the shadow would be reduced, um, as, as, as far as it extends into the properties by reducing the height.
And, and if it was, well, if it was, if you'd reduce the height, it would, it would definitely affect the shadows, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, all right, now, uh, with regard to the negative criteria, would there be any detriment to the zone plan or the public good as a result of the granting of these six variances, including the FAR variance?
You, you didn't do it, I was just about to get there. Um, in my opinion, there is substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. You're asking for, uh, FAR variance, that's, uh, sixty, sixteen percent over. You're also asking for, um, five associated bulk variances. So again, this, this all boils down to a, a, a proposed building being oversized of, for this specific property here. And with that, and with all the negative impacts, I think there would be a substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan, the zoning ordinance. Um, you heard my review of the master plan and, and some of the objectives that it had. I think this proposal is directly against those, um, objectives of the master plan and what happened to impairment, um, to, to this residential zone.
Is there anything else you would like to tell the board?
I believe that would conclude my...
Thank you.
Schaefer, I believe it will be your turn, if you have any questions. Very few. Right, we do, Mr. Bellamy, right?
Got it.
Thank you. As a Rutgers alum, I always enjoy crossing other Rutgers alum.
It's a great school.
It's a great school.
Wish their basketball team would have, uh, done a little better, shouldn't they?
Yeah, well, yeah, never. Um, yeah. Cutting to the chase of, of the chairman's inquiry, you don't disagree? My APKs can build a thirty-five foot structure, correct?
That's permitted in the zone as far as height.
They could effectively build a ten-foot wide, thirty-five foot tall, from front yard setback to rear yard setback home, compliant if they wanted to live in it. Could they not?
I would have to check with the building coverage, but theoretically, you may be able to fit that in. But it's a very narrow building, I think you heard from your planner...
I know what it is, I'm just asking you a question, you can do that, right?
Yeah, so it's, and thirty percent building coverage members.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good. And that thirty-five foot wall, we call it the wall, from the front yard setback to the rear yard setback, would be thirty-five foot high, right?
That's the permitted height.
And that would cast effectively the identical shadow that you described in the Dresner, in the Dresner-Robin plan that you're kind of to show the board, isn't that correct?
I disagree, I don't think the shadows would move as far as they currently do. I, I think you're gonna pull them back probably a, a couple feet. The, I think it's a difference of probably six feet, because that's your increased setback, so that, that may be the, the difference in shadows.
But we're casting a little less, because I pulled back another two point three, three feet. So that shadow is gone. And so what you're telling the board is maybe is a three feet, four feet, six feet of additional shadow because of width of the building, or are we looking at the feet of the building for obstruction of sun? I'm a sailor, so when I see light obstructed, that means based upon the highest point of shadowing, we are obstructing. Do you agree?
Those factors all account. As you can see by the shadow study, pulling in the building two feet does decrease the slipper of shown in dark green here, so...
Yeah, in the rear.
Yeah, so that...
So they're casting less shadow than before, correct?
De minimis, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So you said to this board, I listened carefully to every word people said. You said the building is substantially deep, and you disagree with that, correct? That was part of your testimony, substantially deep, so it's wrong, this building is substantially deep.
As compared to the neighbor's, correct?
Well, what about to the zone, though? The zone allows, correct?
Within a permitted building coverage and FAR, which you're both exceeding, and side yard...
So let, uh, let's address your comment, the building is...
So let's, let's address your comment, the building is substantially deep. You didn't say substantially deep compared to side yard setback, front yard setback, height of our building cut. You said the building was substantially deep. What was that, or was that not your testimony?
You asked me a clarifying question.
No, I'm asking you, was that, you can clarify or redirect. I'm asking you to question, did you posit to this board the building was too substantially deep?
As compared to the neighbors, correct.
All right, well, the, the, we're not comparing a neighbor application. We're comparing this application to whether the rear is complying, correct? And there's no variance request for a rear yard setback, correct?
There's no variance request.
So there is no substantially deep problem with this building, is there?
It, it all ties in, again, to the FAR variance request.
Okay, all right, so. This property's twenty-five-hundred square foot property, correct?
That's correct.
How many other twenty-five-hundred square foot properties in your tenure or your review or living in middle town, coming to Belmont, observing for this project? How many other twenty-five-hundred square foot lots are there in town?
And I, I could only reference the, the ones in the direct, on Fifteenth Avenue, the, the three blocks that I identified.
All right, how many were there?
There was three directly adjacent to the west.
Have any of them been redeveloped?
They're developed with single-family homes.
Now, have any of them been redeveloped?
No, they're not under redevelopment.
All right, let's go on to the next segment, because I want to move on for the board's time.
All right, there was four properties on block one fifty-one. One was two thousand square feet, the other three were three thousand square feet. And there was three, uh, four properties on block one fifty that were twenty-five-hundred square.
How many of those have been redeveloped?
I don't know the timing of the constructions of those homes.
Do you know the ages of the homes?
I, I do that.
Are you familiar with any of the homes on Fourteenth between Ocean and A?
Uh, I, I did walk along that block, but I don't have direct knowledge.
Do you know the size of their lives?
Not, not.
Yes, or no?
No.
Do you know their weight?
No.
Do you know their depth?
No.
Do you know the size of the homes on those?
No.
Do you know when they were redeveloped?
No, that wasn't, that wasn't under my scope.
Okay, well, I, I'm not, I'm not asking about your scope, I'm asking about your knowledge of this. Do you know whether they spurred redevelopment coming down the street that they were on? Do I need a plain analysis of that?
You give good history, but again, this is all relative to the property and the project that's being proposed.
A block away.
The zoning is the zoning, and it was recently, nine years ago, amended to include an FAR table. We, we don't zone by variances as a professional planner. We don't zone as variances. We, we zone with the zoning.
Let's, let's cut to.
Excuse me, let him, let him finish his answer, please.
Okay, finish your, finish your.
I haven't objected, I could have a lot.
Fine, object when you desire.
And then I was going to say, this, this board does have a chance to review variance requests at the end of each year. So this, if this was an issue, something that the board desired to, you know, make a recommendation to increase the FAR, they could have done so over the nine years. As far as I know, that has not happened, the zoning is in place. The zone graduated FAR table is in place, and that's what guides our development, not what could be developed, not what has been developed on other properties. It's what's being developed on this specific twenty-five-hundred square foot property, this specific FAR variance request, under this specific zoning for the FAR.
So that testimony, I appreciate that, understand it, as does the board. What you're telling them is you're not authorized to grant a, a D-four variance on a twenty-five-hundred square foot because if it exceeds, it's a seventy-eight percent far.
That, that was not, that was not my.
Just don't consider it, that's what your testimony is.
That was not my testimony, and I actually said in my, I think my opening paragraph was that this board does have the power to grant D-four variances under showing that there's special reasons and site accommodation. I think that was one of the first things I said to this board.
Let's get to site accommodation, I don't have too much more after that. You know, words are words, but your statement was that this lot cannot accommodate the sixteen percent over. So, my first question on that statement, I want to relate back to the question you made. You were here for the whole night, right?
I've been here to every meeting so far.
How do I do on the, on the, on our, you know our alma mater study? Because you were probably there when it was done, you probably wrote it.
The population multiplier.
Yes, you know all about that, right?
I've, I've done quite a few studies.
How do I do on the two-point-six-oh-six for a three-bedroom?
I, I rely on having that information in front of me, but it sounds like it's in line with what I've seen.
Yeah, so, what that tells the board is in this criteria, I think, upper-middle valued home, new, only when I'm cutting two thousand and sixteen, you might correct. That the expected density in a three-bedroom is two-point-six people, is that correct?
As you testified to, I don't have that.
Are you agreeing with that study?
I don't have the numbers.
Does it sound appropriate?
It, it sounds like it's reasonable, yes.
Hey, look, you, oh, oh, can you do Jersey City? You do all this great stuff, I envy what you get to do. When you're designing that stuff, you know the multipliers for two bedrooms, one bedrooms, three bedrooms, studios, correct? You know what the multiplier for density and occupancy is, correct?
I've done population studies.
You know, right, yeah. So the board can expect two-point-six people to inhabit this structure, correct?
And I, and I just want to bring you back to the parking requirement, which.
I'm not on the parking requirement, I go wherever you want to go, I'm okay. So tell me how two-point-six, one, two, and maybe a point-six or another person is going to be that this property cannot accommodate that use and density.
Because you have all these other bulk variances, again, directly tied to the FAR, FAR variance. You have a parking variance directly tied to the number of bedrooms, that intensity of the building. And you have an FAR that permits a one-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-square-foot home, which I think is appropriately sized for your, your two-point-oh-six. I believe that's around the size of my home, I have a dog, we'll count that as the point-oh-six, that's, that's reasonable.
Yeah. The, the parking that you're parking on, there's no parking now on-site, correct?
Uh, no, not on the property.
And how many bedrooms is the existing property?
I'm not aware of that.
So you don't know what the existing parking requirement is?
Um, I think it's in the zoning table, I just, I don't have that.
But they're, they're making, they're creating onsite parking, compliant.
And you're losing on-street parking, so one, it's a net zero, okay?
No, there's not, there's a curb cut existing there, is there not?
Not on that, directly in front of the property?
Well, I got a, I got a letter from Mrs. Burris today, talking about that there's maybe a curb cut there and a, a parking spot on, on the neighbor's property.
It's, um, from what I can see, it splits the two properties, which is common from my analysis of these twenty-five-hundred square foot hot, uh, home, uh, properties. A lot of them have a shared driveway leading to the back, so that must have been a common development when these homes were built.
Well, we may litigate what it is, but it's not a valid parking spot where that curb cut is, correct?
Where the curb cut is.
Where you walked and you saw the property, you saw the neighborhood, you walked by, you saw the curb cut there.
I don't know what would make it not valid.
Well, are you, are, is it proper to park across the curb cut on the public street or right of it?
Proper to park across the curb.
Is it, is it illegal parking space to block across the existing curb cut in front of this property?
Can you park in front of the curb cut on the street, is that what you're asking? No.
All right, so where is the, the net loss of a, I think you, you said there's a loss of a parking space.
Yeah, you're creating a new curb cut. I, I don't know if the other curb cut goes away, again, it splits two properties.
But we're moving the curb cut.
I would imagine you remove what's on your property.
Yeah, which is predominantly on our property, the curb cut. So we're just moving it, that's not losing more parking spaces. Did you do a parking study on the street?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
The burn of proof is on the applicant.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm cross-examining, you know, at this point.
Mr. Schaefer, you said you were going to be brief with Mr. Schaefer.
I'm done, no further questions, thank you.
Can we just get a check here from, from the attorneys that are involved? Again, I think in fairness to their second applicants, and we've given this application a significant amount of time, entire meetings, two hours in this meeting. I would just like to just ask your appetite for either a journey until later tonight or a journey until a different date. I got to get a feel for when we wrap this up, because this board can't continue. It's going to be the fourth night we come back for one residential application. Which I think any judge looking at that would say, you know, we've given us more than enough time and we've been more than patient with the testimony from both sides.
Maybe my colleague didn't take how much more he has.
I'm Mrs. Burris.
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions for him, so we're going to come back another day.
Well, like I said, we're going to break at eight fifteen, I'm getting an appetite for whether or not you want it, depending on how long that application takes, if you want to hang around and see how long it takes, or if your appetite is to get to reschedule for either April or May, space available.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, Mr. Schmelini, when we're done with Mr. Bellamy, did you have any other witnesses?
Yes, I have one witness, Mrs. O'Grady.
You have one, okay. And Roberta, did you have a witness?
I know I have no witnesses, but I just don't know that Mr. Bellamy is coming back.
Okay, so you have courts examined, okay.
Well, certainly it looks like, two or three questions, let's finish, Mr. Bellamy, two or three questions.
No, I agree, I'm not saying cut now, but I'm, I'm just, just floating the idea that we're going to hear, we're hearing a second case, and you guys want to wait till that, till that ends, to come back tonight or come back a different day.
Oh, we, we hear you, let him clear with the greatest respect and optimism. If this witness is done shortly and it's only declined, I don't see how declined unless she's going to be lengthy. I don't know how she's going to be more than ten minutes.
Okay, let's, I agree, I agree with that.
What we're talking about, we're talking about.
Let's continue.
Okay, Mr. Bellamy, my name is Roberta, or some people call me Mrs. Burris, and everybody else seeks to be a personal basis with me. That there is a driver, called Mrs. Burris. I just have a couple of questions, I'm a little confused. Now, at the very beginning, you heard Mr. Schreiber talk about how this was a humble development or a humble structure proposed based on the size of the lot. Now, you had indicated that it is oversized for the lot. Could you explain to me why you agree or you don't agree with Mr. Schreiber?
Yeah, the characterization, my characterization of oversized was directly related to the zoning requirements, the FAR and bulk requirements. Modest, I think, was modest in, in terms of possibly other homes being developed in Belmar, maybe larger properties, other homes, what did clients wish it were. That his, his reference may have been, and I can't testify to this, may have been that, my characterization was based on the zoning requirements.
So, based on the size of the lot, is it a professional opinion, as a professional planner, that this is a humble, proposed project for this size lot?
Not in my opinion.
Okay. And one other thing that you indicated, you had indicated that, correct, in my mind, that the borough of Belmar could have amended their zoning ordinance to allow for a different floor area, probably with consolidation, but they did not separate?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mrs. Burris. Next witness, please.
All right, you know, we want public questions for Mr. Bellamy.
And thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Kennedy, does anyone here from the public have a question for Mr. Bellamy?
Mr. Sharkus, Fourth Avenue.
All right, good evening, Mr. Sharkus, I don't know if this forum, but it's new years. But again, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you're providing will be the truth, confession, and help you guide.
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bellamy, could you repeat what time of day you took the, the shadow pictures?
They were.
Because I haven't seen them, but I did a shadow study myself.
They were at eleven A M. and one P M. March twenty-first, June twenty-first, and September twenty-first. So really, the time of years, you would more likely be outside utilizing your.
And I'm sorry, eleven A M. and one, one P M.
So, it's my understanding that on two-fourteen, there's no heat, so it's really a summer, my understanding, a summer house. My shadow study showed that shadows during this time of winter, they're, they come from the houses on the south side of the street. You, you don't actually depict them, because they're far greater than the shadows you get in the backyard.
Sorry, I didn't have to object, this is a statement, if you have a question.
Well, I asked when, because just need an understanding, you didn't show the other side of the street. And is there a reason you didn't include that in your shadow study?
I showed the existing shadows on this side of the block that impact what they're being, what's being proposed and impact is directly adjacent neighbors, so that's, that's what it's showing. There was a shadow from the south, you would see it at the bottom of the page, creeping from the south side onto the north side. But under these times, there, there weren't shadow impacts from the south side.
I, from the pictures I have, I disagree with our.
You have any questions, this is a last.
Mr. McGleeny, can you have any objection?
I'm objecting.
To me, and then I'll speak to the member of the public.
And that's the way to do it, you speak to the chair.
Do not address the member of the public directly, what's your, what's your, what's your objection?
My objection is that she's making statements, she's not asking questions.
It's a comment.
As a member of the public, she, she, we determine the amount of conversation she permitted to have, not you as an objective, so, I, I, please understand, there's a point to be made here, Mr. Sharkus. Please make it, and then if you're done, we can move on.
I like clarification, is this a time for asking questions or a time for making comments?
We permit questions and some limited comments. It isn't, it isn't open comment, the intent is to comment her question relative to, to your witness and testimony he gave. And that's what I understand, there's a dialogue happening between the two of them right now, that's what I'm observing, so.
That was not my understanding.
Okay, so I guess my point is, I have different photographs showing shadows in the fall and in December, where primary shadows are coming from across the street, almost across to the property.
And I think you're absolutely right, this does not show the period between September and March, so the period of time, October, December, that you're talking about. In that time of year, your shadows would go north across the street, so they would be more likely the shadows that you're describing during that time period. This shows really the, the more of the summer, spring, summer, early fall months, where those shadows aren't in quite a, on this, they don't.
And, Mr. Sharkus, it's in the solace to you, we're accepting his credentials and, and, and the validity of the shadows that he's representing here, in his qualifications. And he's under oath, and he's indicating that, you know, from his experience, this is what's, what's to be seen on those days. We don't really have a significant reason to doubt the accuracy of what he's submitting.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, if that's the case, I would leave it up to the applicant's challenge. But I don't think the planner or, or his attorney is questioning the, the, the report that he provided.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Miss Sharkus. All right, yep, okay, let's continue, if you have only have.
And you know, can I, I'm sorry, just ask Mr. Bellamy one quick question, just for the record. Mr. Bellamy, you indicated that the shadow studies were March twenty-first, June twenty-first, and September twenty-first?
That's right.
All right, and what years was that?
Uh, it's based on current year, so I guess twenty-two would have been when I found out.
All right, and does it, just for the record, does it matter that the plans were dated after that, or, or is that not, not relevant?
No, I don't think that's relevant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just follow with that, and you took into account in the latest, in the shadow study, the revision, the current revision in the plans.
Correct.
And you didn't do the fall because.
You're less likely to be outside during that time period, so I'd show the summer months.
Thank you.
So, Mr. McGleeny, you have a witness?
I do.
All right, good evening, if you could just state your name and address the record, please.
Sure, it's Councilman Zolier, I have this, you know, I have this. Airs is two-fourteen Fifteenth Avenue, Belmar.
But you own another house elsewhere.
Rent in thirty-second place, Belmar, one-one-two-third-one.
All right, and thank you, and welcome to the Belmar zoning board, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, confession, and help you guide?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And the property that you own on Fifteenth Street, is it owned property right now, right now?
That's right, I own it.
All right, and how, how long have you owned it?
Since two thousand and nine.
Okay. Rather than me ask you a lot of questions, I'm going to have, just let you tell the board, for, for purposes of moving this along, as the chairman would like. I will ask you generally, what are your concerns and what do you want the board to hear from you?
I have a few comments, I appreciate it, you can just give me five minutes, that's all. I probably won't take that long, and we'll be quicker.
Please, please go ahead.
And, you know, I want to let you know, I've come here for, since October, so this is how I feel, this is how my husband feels, there's, there, we've had several other witnesses show up, but this has continued to move on, and obviously, things happen, you know, someone is, his father's in the hospital, it's time to be put in the ward. And another gentleman who was tired of the work, so you all know what happened. Okay, so I thank you very much for being up to speak tonight. I don't normally represent myself, like I said, there are several neighbors of, of. I don't normally represent myself, like I said, there are several neighbors of the avenue, which, yes, a lot of them are summer properties. And such parties as I, and find the application presented by two eight fifteenth avenue as destructive, and as you have said in so many of your comments and other hearings that I've attended, overpowering, as the general. My husband and I own a home, just three houses down, like I said, at two fourteen fifteenth avenue, since two thousand and nine, so I'm about to be boarded out of the short sale, because we love Belmar so much. We've been taxpaying residents since March of '09, and it doesn't matter if it's a summer property or not. It is my property, and I come here to enjoy the spring, the summer, and as much of the winter as I possibly can, because that's how much we love Belmar. And I love my backyard, I decorate a couple of flowers all year long, I have, I have tons of furniture in the back, and I enjoy the backyard sun and light and air, of what is, that's why I come over from New York, and I drive an hour and a half, and sometimes two hours in traffic, to enjoy it, okay? So, air, light, and sun are important. I did some of my own research prior to hiring Joe, because obviously we're gonna object this and you're working through appearances, and my objections are of, of, so, first of all, you know, with regards to the front store setback, it appears that the proposed second floor balcony, that they're developing, but there's the extended, will extend beyond the depth of all inline corresponding adjacent properties. Additionally, the aesthetic bunged-out turret structure, which serves really no livable space, but now that's been presented in their, their, their plans, are for aesthetic reasons only, but will run from the porch to the third floor, there are protruding out of the rest, for all of us, the houses that are in line with that, all properties, okay? On fifteen second, the side door setback barriers is requested are a fire hazard, okay? Fire separation laws require ten feet between buildings, so the existing three-point-nine foot setback are already too narrow, and to ask for less than three-point-oh-eight lately, leaves the surrounding home susceptible in regards to a fire. We have sadly remembered the new home that went up in flames behind us, directly to the block behind us on fourteen, that left two men and a dog dead, and that had plenty of space for the fire department to get to their property, okay? Because it had no, nothing on the side of it, all right? Furthermore, by decreasing the setback, they're looking to build a two-and-a-half-story home against the property line. And based on the survey, there's no way the neighbor can get his car and easement on the backyard. That's the easement that she was presenting earlier, which he's talking about, the cut curb, that's between the two properties, that's been used in years as, as a, as a parking space, which the Chas and his wife also use, and they fight over it constantly, okay? The easement has been used for decades for parking, and helps move one car from the already tight parking space situation that we already have. On top of the parking, they show one space to park a car in, in front of the house, or maybe two, which was only original plans. For section five of the Belmar new code, parking areas shall not be located in any required front yard except for a single-family and two-family residence with a conforming driveway. Let us, so for residential dwelling unit, a one-car garage and driveway combination shall count as a one-point-seven-five off-the-street parking space, providing that the driveway measures a minimum of thirty feet in length in the face of the garage door and the sidewalk, that's in Hill Payore. And a two-car garage driveway, which is currently managated, must provide a minimum width of twenty feet, and it's minimum width of thirty, there's no way that that's in our plans, okay? Next, let us look for the item of parking spaces. Parking spaces may not be located in a front or side lawn area, isn't that where we're putting pretty much the parking spot? Lastly, an additional, well, not lastly, an additional direction in here is they're replacing a parking variance in one car by cutting the curb to allow for a car on their front property, would require twelve-foot apron, now removes two additional parking spots from, from Belmar's parking. Plus, it now gets rid of the easement where they're already parking, so that's three spots that are missing, okay? Last, and to continue, the, we've had additionally on the front parking, it doesn't provide enough room for pulling out, as well as pedestrians, as a reason for denial by you guys, by the board, on June twenty-seventh of two thousand and nineteen, Thomas Rose in Geraldine, like a meeting, two thousand and four Ocean Avenue, seeking variances for parking space size and location. The board rejected it due to loss of parking spaces that has created the backing out of a short driveway, which this would make a deviation from the size of the parking space, and how close it is to the sidewalk, you guys denied that.
Can I, can I budge you for a second, if you don't mind, please?
I'm almost done, I don't have...
Okay, no, but it's important, because you're making some statements, and I, I just don't want them to go without necessarily some conversation around. First of all, you are under oath, okay?
Absolutely.
And you're stating that three parking spots on the street will be lost, is that correct, is that what you stated?
I'm saying three parking spots, I didn't say on the street, I said on the street.
So, there's three total parking spots, and, and one of those is currently, goes across the property line, correct?
Not their property line, it's a shared easement.
It goes across, it goes across two property lines, right? And so, in terms of that being problematic, but you're testifying that there's three spots that will be lost relative to this application?
So, two...
Are you netting it out with a spot that will be gained by any chance, or you're not counting them?
So, you net it out of each two.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to correct that, because again, you are under oath.
Well, no, well, you know what, I am under oath, and it will be three, and I'll tell you why it will be three, and I'll explain. Because, because their family fights with the neighbor next door, they not only, let me finish, they not only park in that easement, they also block that easement, they block that spot.
You're referring to an easement, which we haven't had any conversation around.
That's why the three parking spots are usually...
So, let me just table that for a moment, right? And then relative to your comments about a different application, and, you know, some of the newer board members may not have heard of some of the board members that they hear, as long as I have been, I've heard it, you know, to the point that they're confused. But each application rises and falls on its own merit.
No, I understand that.
And, and relative to decisions we made around that particular application, that was one of many factors that we either approved or denied the application. So, I don't wanna allow any reference to some other case, and suggest here that it would apply for this case tonight.
Right, I understand, I'm just reading up back that these short driveways...
Well, if you understand it, I just wanna make sure that we're clarifying for, for both sides, the public and the board members, that that's, there's no relevance to the comment, to the application that you're referring to.
Okay, not a problem, I was just trying to bring up...
Understood, but I just need to make sure that we don't go too far off track here.
Understood. So, so, contrary to the zoning ordinance and master plan, the scale of the project is expensive, with its back decks fifty-eight feet, fifty-eight feet depth and three floors, it will enclose on sunlight and space in the backyards as well. And like I said, I do come here to enjoy my time in Belmar, and, and the outdoor space all year long. So, let me continue. In revisiting, so, the two, the two oh eight fifteenth addendum, which states that the applicants here with the use variance is justified, because while property was small and what is contemplating zone, the structure is actually considerably under FBR, that would be permitted for a conforming lot. No, once again, this is not a conforming lot. The home at two hundred and a half fifteenth avenue, which was recently received zoning approval, is only thirty-five feet deep, and needed to be stepped back in entirely by twenty feet to accommodate the two parking spaces, and that's on a thirty-foot line. Additionally, if you review the minutes of zoning meeting on six twenty-one twenty-one, the board approval, you'll see that they did alleviate several law requirements, such as side door setbacks, instead of creating more as the applicants here have requested, several, not, nor did they ask for variance of the developed parking variance. And lastly, there's two other things, the stormwater runoff, our backyards already are flooded in any heavy rain, which is not even that heavy, but all the front, the backyards are flooded, I can swim in my backyard, and the front, and we all know the water that runs off down. So, this major house that they're gonna build is gonna cause even more water problems. And lastly, if I'm not mistaken, the new mayor is only two months in, and from what I, I, I know, he has run on the fact that there is too much overbuilding in Belmar. And Mr. Schreiber's taken a photo of my house and the houses next to it. I've been here since '09, and I have some great friends here. The neighbors across the street, they might have a small house, but they clean it, they update it every year. Another house was just bought across the street from us. They redid, they have, they have two children and one, and, and a dog, and they redid the entire thing, and they need to go up or anything else. So, there are ways to accommodate. And the other reason why, why I think we also mentioned about what you can put in the basement, is because there are people here that stay, stated, that do put bedrooms in their basement downstairs. So, that's my testimony, and that's what my concern is here today, because everything that I've seen and I know, since '09, since I've been here, have had to taxpay in a living in Belmar.
Thank you. Nice job, any questions for the...
Well, I, I could address it as a statement versus, I'll phrase it as a question, but, Miss O'Leary, you do not come to this board with any written shared driveway easement agreement between the properties that you reference, correct, yes or no?
First of all...
Yes or no?
No, it's not my property.
I'm asking you, you said there's a shared driveway easement?
Between their properties, correct?
Yeah, so, good. So, we live and die on our cross-examination of these statements. Do you have any document, a written document between the two properties you're referencing, that there is a shared driveway easement, yes or no?
No.
Do you have a court order determining adverse possession or easement rights for you to present to this board regarding a shared driveway order of the court?
No.
Have you done any title work to determine whether there's any recorded easements between the board?
That's not, first of all, that's not what I'm here for.
I'm asking you a question.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, excuse me, one second, I know everyone's getting emotional, and I'm trying to understand, but, but you know, let me just...
No, the answer is no to that, but my point is that...
But you can, you can, your, your attorney's gonna cross-examine you when you're done, so just answer the question.
So, your point is, you came here, you made a statement about three parking spots being lost, and there being the existence of a shared driveway easement, ill-informed, without proof, without documents, is that right?
I'm gonna object to the nature of this comment, if he wants to say...
It's not a comment, it's a question.
If he doesn't, if he wants to say that he doesn't have a document to support something that's...
I withdraw the question, I think we all understand.
My point is here, is that it is, I have a lawyer, he's, he's doing all the labels. My point is also to bring to you my concerns. I have been there since, since they had purchased the property. I know what goes on there, I see, I see them fight with the neighbor next door, that they claim that that's their driveway. I see them parking there, I see them take up two spots with, in front of their own property, where they park. I see that, I see other cars parked in, so once the car is in the, in the illegal easement, people still park and block that other car in that spot, plus take the other two spots that are in the, in the, you know, the lines, right? That we're supposed to stay with that. So, that is all parking, that is not a way, okay? That's the point that I was trying to make to, whether it's legal or not, this is what's been going on. And as usually, legally, there would be two spots. The way things have gone on for years, since I've been there in '09, they have used that other spot as an easement, and known as the, the gentleman said, well, it's not legal. Okay, well, no, that's something else to bring up within, whatever. But my point is, as usual, that takes up, that's four spots. Two legal ones to the front, is the one that everyone parks in the easement between their house and her client's house, and then people park right behind that, right? So, that's four spots, and we all know how difficult Belmar parking situation is. And that's what I'm trying to bring up. I'm also trying to bring up that, you know, maybe to you, a bigger beautiful house, I'm not, I'm not telling them they can't build a house that's beautiful and new, okay? But what I'm trying to say to you is, you know, I have a one-and-a-half-story. We have five legal bedrooms in that, they're small, but we have five, okay? The house across the street, they have two children plus themselves, so they have three bedrooms, and it's one floor, and it's gorgeous inside, I've been inside, they have been done it. So, maybe the outside doesn't aesthetically look good to you, but this is Belmar, and I've been coming here since I was a child, okay? And my father was a New York City detective, I wouldn't lie to you, okay? I love this, yeah, this town, and just because, you know, somebody wants to put a fifty-foot property on it, maybe they should have bought a bigger lot.
One more question to the witness, yes, please. You said you have a five-bedroom home, correct, I didn't know that.
It's five bedrooms, and they're illegal.
They are?
And they're very small.
So, for a five-bedroom house, in all your research, how many parking spots are you required to have, provide?
Two and a half.
Four, how many do you provide?
I have an easement in the backyard, so I can park in the back.
You have compliant parking?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to bring one more thing up, I did speak to you, I did speak to you about...
When I said I didn't wanna represent you, and I wanted to know part of it.
I spoke to you for ten minutes.
Let's stop, this is, this is taking off, all right, this is why we're potentially running to a fourth meeting here, because we're letting this stuff know, a field from the vacancies that are being requested, so we focus on that. Can we get this done tonight, are we done?
I have no other witnesses.
Mr. Schreiber?
No, we're off.
Okay. With my apologies to the second applicant, I, I would like to take a five-minute break, and then come back, and then let's finish this case for the first one. Okay, so, at this stage, we are going to open this up to public comment, then we will move to board comments, and then we will move to proceed for vote.
Can I have a close exchange at some point, please?
Now would be the time, please.
Okay. My name is Robert Berz, I'm the chairman, I've been in the chair for forty-three years. And I just kinda wanna wrap things up, because we're post here at Belmar, we're at one. So, the question is, what is the... We're not back down there.
Oh, I'm sorry, April, I couldn't do anything there, I'm so sorry.
You know, one, one, just for the record, when you take a little call, and then, and then we'll...
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Day?
Here.
Mr. O'Nita?
Here.
Mr. the Chair, what's Mr. Lindem?
Here.
Mr. Livin?
Here.
Mr. Doryhouse? And Mr. Linn?
Okay, sorry, Roberta?
The question is, what is the positive impact of this twenty-six-hundred forty-one square foot home on the purpose of zoning, when the applicant's own expert and planner in November repeatedly agreed and testified that a nineteen-hundred-and-fifty-foot square foot home, three-bedroom home with modern amenities, could be constructed on this twenty-five-foot wide lot? Now, in fact, he walked that back a little today, in November, under cross-examination from Joseph McLeary, he said on several occasions that a perfectly adequate nineteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home with modern amenities could be built on this twenty-five-wide lot. And there is no need to grant the applicant's wish list for a study on the first floor that appears very much like a four-bedroom, with a very large break room kitchen, with room for a very large island, and a large dining area, wine refrigerator, large living room, there's room for six tables, two couches, and several comfortably large armchairs. There is no need for a large shower that has two doors, and a freestanding tub in the master bathroom, and a shower that's six feet in the lower floor, along with large and/or other walk-in closets and other luxury amenities. There is no need for so many large porches, balconies, and decks. The house proposed could and should have been scaled back so that the purpose of zoning could be accomplished without excessively building out and creating a negative impact on the neighbors' area and the purpose of zoning, among other things. Applicant could have purchased a much larger lot when they bought the property. Now, remember, they only closed title in two thousand and twenty, and they admitted in November that they had gone to another planner, or another team, they called it, before they went to Mr. McGill and Mary Hearn. And even Mary Hearn, their test, their expert, indicate that this is, and her words were, it's a tiny, tiny lot, okay? And they want to build a twenty-six-hundred forty-foot house on this tiny, modesty lot. So, they seek a building coverage of forty-eight-point-seven percent where thirty is allowed, and bar is increasing from a conforming thirty-one-point-two-five percent to ninety-four-point-two percent where seventy-eight is permitted. There is a pre-existing on my client's lot... to 94.2% where 78% is permitted. There is a pre-existing on my client's lot, there's two houses on that lot. Again, Mary Herm testified that she bought the back house with about eight years' old. And so, what is proposed is they're going to move the house 10% closer to my client's structures, which is going to decrease the ability to get back there in the event that there's a fire or other emergency. Now, they've talked about this illegal driveway. In essence, it's a non-conforming curb cut where people seem to park, according to Mrs. O'Leary. And of course, we're going to, if that curb cut is limited to the property line, there'll be no access in or out or the ability to park there. So, what is the applicant's hardship? You know what their hardship is? The lot's 25-foot lot, that's their hardship. But again, they only purchased the lot two years before they came to this board. It is a beautiful home, an absolutely gorgeous home that Mrs. Herm, Ms. Herm has designed, but it does not go on a 20-foot wide lot. So, they want the tiny lot with a house on it, and right away set down to knock it down to big, to be much, much more than the size of the house. And one clear, one clear collateral effect of this application is going to be that you send to every realtor, every person who wants to sell their house, every developer, the very loud message, especially if you're concerned about overdevelopment in Belmar, is that they should sell these 25-foot wide lots, and of course, there's three more adjacent right on this lot alone, because the board is casting away zoning and providing these variances. The planner, Mr. Bellamy, testified that the, that the town could have revised their zoning or their master plan, and did not take the opportunity to do so. So, if you grant these devariances-
Too many of them.
In essence, what the board is doing is, is engaging in rezoning. And the standard for this devariance is undue hardship. There is no undue hardship. Again, they could have purchased a larger lot, Mrs. O'Leary testified to that, or Lord of that morning. And the other new homes in the neighborhood, none of them are built on 25-foot wide lots. All those lots in this neighborhood are 35 feet wide or wider. And Mr. Bellamy also testified that they failed to show the required positive criteria, other than Mr. Schreiber's statement that it's a very humble project, it is a sizable lot. But again, he wasn't testifying, he was just providing with the meaning of zoning. So, based on the foregoing, based on the negative and detrimental impact on parking, life, air safety, and the public good, we request that this application be denied.
Thank you.
That was pretty eloquent, so I'm going to keep my comments brief. When we were here, I think it was actually December, Robert, not November, but when we were here at the time that the testimony was taken, I asked Ms. Herm, why, what was the special reason? Why did they need to build a house this big on such a small lot? And her comment was, "The size of the home is too small for their family and how they want to use it." That was the testimony, and I believe that quote from the government. I submit to you that is a not, not a good legal reason to grant variances. That is personal to them. And the testimony at that time was only two people were going to occupy the home. Yeah, you know, during the summer, you always have more than two people, right, you have family, you have guests, et cetera. But the testimony was that the two applicants were going to occupy the home. This is a, well, this is a home that far exceeds in terms of, of the variance requests. We're not talking about small variances. We're talking about a floor area ratio variance that's over 16%. When you have an ordinance that progressively allows you to increase the floor area ratio as you get to a smaller and smaller lot, so a lot this big, you have a smaller floor area ratio, because the zoning is obviously trying to keep things to scale, so that you have, you know, a visual effect and a scaled effect, and you don't have these humongous houses on super tiny lots. But the council or the governing body recognized that as you have smaller lots, you have to allow a little bit more floor area ratio, otherwise you're just not going to have something that's really tentative, something that really can be occupied by, by a family. And so, they have increased floor area ratio all the way up to 78%. The applicant initially came in with a floor area ratio of like 100%, a little over 100%, and now it's down to 94. I submit to you that that is not acceptable. 100 to 94 is not acceptable. If they were coming in and they were saying, "Look, you know, it's 78%, and we're going to 80, or 81," okay. You know, maybe they need to go to 80 or 81 to, to make a house that actually works, okay? And even though that might not be a good legal reason. But this is 16% over. In addition, the building coverage is, I think it was 18.7% over. Again, not a small variance. You're already dealing with a small lot. When you grant these large variances on small lots, it exacerbates the scale and the scope of the project visually in many ways. And really, it's absolutely unnecessary under the circumstances. And it goes against the master plan, clearly. The master plan was revised to limit overdevelopment of properties. This is the, this is the quintessential example of overdevelopment. Not only do you have multiple variances, six, but you have multiple variances with multiple large percentage requests, not just going over a little bit. I thought that Mr. Bellamy acquitted himself fairly well, because he came back to the master plan time and time again, and pointed out that this is not an appropriate plan for the size of this lot. And there was testimony, more than once, by both experts from, from the applicant, that a home could be built of 1,950 square feet that could easily accommodate two people and still have a big, you know, 900-square-foot basement. That isn't even accounted in, in the floor area ratio. I don't think the decks and the open decks are accounted in the floor area ratio. This has a several hundred feet of open decks as well, and that testimony came out. The bottom line with regard to this application is that, you know, for the C variances, you have to show hardship. There is no hardship here. Absolutely no hardship with regard to C variances. This is something that they want to build to suit themselves. That is not hardship. With the D variances, yes, you have to show that the lot can accommodate the proposed project. Obviously, it cannot accommodate the proposed project, given the scale and scope and how big it is. And in addition, you have special reasons. And when you're looking at floor area ratio, the Supreme Court said, "You look at the aggregator. You look at everything, because it all affects, floor area ratio affects all these things. It affects height, it affects width, even if you're within the proper." You know, we have substantial detriment to the zone plan of the public. A substantial detriment to this very neighborhood, which doesn't have any house on this block, a 20, that's this size, let alone a house that's this big. It essentially is three stories when you look at that top piece being 11 feet. There isn't a 30-foot lot with a house this big, a 40-foot lot, a 50-foot lot on this, on this stretch of the street, in this block. There isn't any house that's as big as this one. And this is on the smallest lot in the entire neighborhood. It will definitely change the character of the neighborhood. It is definitely not appropriate. And I would urge this board to, to deny this application. If they want to come back with something that's smaller and more appropriate, we'll take, we'll take an honest look at it. But this is so big, and, and really, taking two feet and four inches off the back is almost insulting under the circumstances. I'm not, these are Mexican people, I'm not denigrating them. But given the scope of this project, if they had come back with a really, you know, a pretty big change in it, we might have looked at it and said, "You know what? I think we can live with that." But we can't live with this. And that shadow study is very clear. It is going to block light, air, open space for several yards, including the entirety of my client's backyard during certain times of the year. You know, if it was a two, two-story, 1,950-square-foot house with, you know, maybe pulling in a little bit here and there, it would make a huge difference. But that's not what they're asking. And so, we are here proposing it, and we will continue to propose it.
Thank you, Mr. Michelini. Okay. So, briefly, my colleagues in the board, going from last to distant, Mr. Michelini uses terms of humongous house, quintessential overdevelopment, and huge. By any means, this house does not fit those descriptions as a single-family residence. He says that it is a substantial detriment to the public good, the public of Belmar. There is no substantial detriment to the public good of Belmar. There's no substantial detriment to the zone plan of Belmar. As he well knows, careful the roads you paint that you walk down. He says there's no hardship. This is a classic C1 hardship based upon the uniqueness, narrowness of the zone. You granted tens, if not hundreds, of variances over the last 20, 30 years based upon C1 uniqueness of the lots within Belmar. This is classic. Candidly, it's also C2 better zoning alternative, whether it being proposed or what exists. We're removing a non-conforming accessory building. We are compliant in rear yard setback. And the fantasy of this whole thing seems to be our argument that we want backyard light. We want air and light. We all know that air and light are not as upright in New Jersey. You can consider it, but they're not as upright. Free of shadow is not a right in New Jersey. Houses cast shadows. The bulk of a lot of this objection of us, you're building a 35-foot tall house, which is going to shadow us as to our neighbors. That's what the code allows. This is the red herring of the, of a whale's dimension, for you to want to vote against this based upon this herring of a shadow study. Addressing Ms. Burrs' comments, what does this do? What positive is there? What positive criteria? It's going to get rid of the dilapidated rental. You can stay a rental number 10, 20, 30, 50 years, if no one improves this property, but this will get rid of that. This will not be a dilapidated rental one time. It will be a new, modern, code buyer compliant structure with proper drainage approved by the borough, so that all waters contained within the property and no additional runoff. There's additional parking. It's aesthetically pleasing, and it will encourage reinvestment, redevelopment of this block and other similar blocks in Belmar. This is the type of family design, reinvestment this town needs, and most importantly, deserves. What you don't want is these people to walk away, sell, someone come in, put up some of new blocks modular as a modern rental, and there goes the rest of the steam of a beautiful block to continue to flourish and redevelop. Thank you, Mr. Shipers. Is there anywhere to hear from the public? That would, you would open up the public comment section now? Anyone here from the public who talked to this application, now would be the time to raise your hand and come to the microphone. We do. And I remember your name was Nancy.
Hey, my name's Nancy.
And I'll remind you that you're still speaking.
Okay. I live at 1,000 C Street. It's between 10 and 11. We completely renovated it four and a half years ago, and I'll give tours. It's, it's 1,800 square feet. It's three bed, actually, it's four bedrooms, three and a half baths. But the first floor, we have a bedroom on the main floor. So, this, you can do it for a much smaller sized house. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that, and I don't mean to be insulting, but it's my understanding that when you have variances, your job is to say no. And then we, as the audience, have to prove to you why we want them, why we want them granted. Is that incorrect on my part?
That's, we're, we're, we're here to review variances and decide whether or not they're, they're something that we should allow or, or do not.
Okay, and it could go, it's like a 50-50 shot.
It's not an automatic no, as, as the town that you referenced earlier-
Right.
-that is not the case, and I don't know.
Fair hating.
I can't speak to fair hating.
Chairman, I would just add that the burden is always on the applicant to prove his, her, his case.
That's what I'm asking. Okay, all right. So, because they restrict, it stayed a nice town. It stayed a popular town. I think that Belmar is past the point where we have to be afraid of inexpensive housing, houses going up. That was true 10 years ago. That was true five years ago. It's a new reality in Belmar. It's a beautiful town, but we just need to be so careful that we, that we keep our standards high. That's what I just want you to, to understand.
Thanks, sir.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Ms. Sharkey.
Linda Sharkey. I was a realtor who sold Zinab and Muthasor House in 2020, and they renovated it. It's beautiful, but it is too small for the family of three kids, each with mates. And so, we did go and look at other properties to see if there was something more accommodating. But they're the second lot. I mean, they have a nice view, it's a nice street, a short walk to the beach, and they love it here in Belmar. And I just, as we looked, the property in, it was probably a year ago, we went out, and the values had already escalated outside their budget, knowing that they wanted to create their forever house. So, I just hope you understand that part of the small lot is due to the lack of inventory on affordable houses to demolish for their budget. And they work very hard, and they're, to me, a great addition to the neighborhood and have been great friends, and I enjoyed working for them, and I hope you help keep them in town, because they need it for their family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkey. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the public? Nope. So, we'll close the public session and open up for board comments. We will start on the end here with Mr. Doreau.
Yes, I have a question for the team here. I watched 20 and 1/2 15th go up on a 30-foot lot, very narrow. This is 25. Do you see any problems with building equipment going in, undermining foundations on either side, because it's going to be tight?
We're building one right now on 14th, on the same width lot, and what we have to do is protect the property lines. It's our, it's a requirement of building that properties on either side of us are protected. And we're putting in sheeting and protecting all of that, so that I can't say that the streets aren't tight, and it's difficult to build in the summer because of all the vehicles that come. But it's our, it's our responsibility to protect the neighborhood.
Because I saw the, the 30-foot lot back 20 and 1/2, and this is five feet less, and that was tight.
And the one we're building now is the same exact 3.08 setbacks.
That's all I had.
This is board comments, so, Mr. Rupert. Comments or questions? You know what? We could combine, since we have a little question about-
Um, you know what, we could combine since we have a little question about.
Can we combine? Yeah, I just wanna make a comment to both parties. Uh, I just looked up two-ten-fifteen, and according to public records, it's twenty-one-hundred square feet, which is not in compliance with the FAR. Am I right or am I wrong?
It's at the.
Two-ten-fifteen says twenty-one-hundred square feet.
Two-ten, two-ten.
What?
Two-ten.
Two-ten.
That's my point.
Right.
There's two units on the property.
But does, don't the two units add up? Is it cumulative for FAR?
Yeah, the back, the back house is over eighty years old, and so is the front house, and they were built so many years ago before all this regulation, before even the municipal land use act.
Right, but this house was built years ago also.
Not that it wasn't.
No, the current, the current one.
Yeah, whatever's there.
Yeah, and they've been there for a while, so basically, if I'm right, two-ten is not in compliance with today's FAR.
Correct, and you don't wanna have two houses on the lots anymore.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and that's an anomaly which you're dying to get rid of.
Right, I mean, it's all over town, the two houses, that you couldn't get.
And that many.
But they're not in compliance.
It's just that they're, it's prior to the municipal land use act, so who knows?
And now that we have zoning, the call is to bring things into conformity. Now, you can make some exceptions, but you shouldn't be making huge exceptions.
Okay, but my point is, this is only a little bigger than the two-hundred square feet at two-ten.
Yeah, but two-ten, I mean, it's only inches off the property line, I mean, that's a, that, those houses burned down, they can't rebuild. It's two houses, it's not one house, you're counting, you're counting.
Right, but isn't it a combined? Yeah, yes, for FAR purposes.
You're trying to get rid of that, everybody's trying to get rid of that.
Okay.
My guy just inherited, because his father died and his grandmother died, so that's why he has.
Just trying to make a point.
No questions. Basically, you know, comment made, the new administration wants to limit over building. As a new member, I, I watch, and having lived in town for about three years now, watch some of these new homes go up, you know, popping here and there. I might not want to live there with no side yards, but that I'm not going to live there. So I don't think this is overdeveloping. That's when you're trying to put forty and fifty feet up on the ocean or, you know, other reasons. I do believe that it is gentrification. Yes, it's a luxury home because of the size of the rooms, but if that's what they can do, will make that home much more sellable if the time comes, when the time comes, hopefully in many years. The aesthetics that Ms. Hearn has done on this are phenomenal compared to so many of the boxes that are here or have been here. And, you know, again, this size home, type of home is making it more conducive for year-round living. And that's what I see happening to the town, and legally, we can't talk about rental and all of that, but the year-round couples nearing retirement, at retirement, that wanna live here all the time and have their children come visit because we're two and three and five blocks from the ocean. To me, it's a good thing. Thank you. Mr. Malato.
Okay, just have one question. Is the entire house coming down? Foundation's coming out? Everything's coming out? So that's how you're allowed to make a little bit of adjustment on the side yard? And the rear yard?
We're proposing a clean sweep.
Okay. So, I understand both parties, I've listened to the testimony, I'm hearing everybody talking. I just know how difficult it is, I'm in the business, to build on a twenty-five-foot lot. I think trying to put a design on a twenty-five-foot lot is just a challenge. I, I know whether we reduce the house to nineteen-fifty or we don't reduce it to nineteen-fifty, we still can have the allowed wall height. So I don't think reducing the house by four hundred square feet is gonna make that much of a change when it comes to a thirty-five-foot-high house. Uh, the balcony's in the front, I think you stepped those back. I think that's gonna reduce the shadow lines coming in from the back. I think you said it was twenty-eight inches, I'll have to take it. So the rear yard setback is larger than required?
Yeah, twenty-eight inches.
So I'm torn in between, you know, it's a difficult project, it's a difficult lot, it's a difficult location, but I don't think the design, I think the design for that particular property kinda fits. So I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malato. Ms. Hearn?
Can I ask Ms. Hearn a question? Ms. Hearn, just for clarification, maybe not just to myself, but to the board. If this house was built and the staircase was built going through the attic and it was unfinished, would that area count towards floor area ratio?
I have to admit, I haven't done one, so until the definition was read to me tonight, I hadn't hooked it up to know. We've been building half-stories exclusively throughout town. I cannot imagine the intent of the ordinance would say that you have to include an area you cannot even get to if you eliminate this standard.
Or if it wasn't heated and cooled or insulated?
Well, again, how it's written, I, I struggle with ordinances and how they're written often. But if you think, right, if you think about the fact that the basement, unfinished, that we always would have a stair go to, it's not counted.
Correct.
I would think the same mindset would be to an attic with a stair, but if you eliminated the stair and then had to count it, I can't even imagine that would work, so.
And in your opinion, just an opinion, if we put a door at the top of the stairs, would you consider that area of their unfinished that potentially would not be counted towards floor area ratio?
Well, finished to me is it's heated and cooled.
Correct.
So.
I mean, the rains.
Right.
So, so.
Whether doors are.
Your applicants, with all due respect, I'm saying could have came in and asked for a nineteen-fifty-square-foot house with unfinished attic, moved into it, and four or five years from now came back to the board and asked for relief to finish an attic. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Burr, you made a comment about, we've all had read the master plan in its entirety and formulated our own opinions of which, and we try to do our best to stick with that. I just wanna make sure I'm clear. You represent the house to the west and to the east of this property?
I represent the houses, there are two on the lot.
Okay, to the west.
To the west.
To the west.
Right next to it.
And one of those houses is on the property line, is that correct?
I haven't looked at it since November, but I believe it is right, the back house is right on the property line.
Is that a rental?
No, and he, as I said, the owner, his grandmother just died, and he comes back.
Is it heated and cooled?
Oh, the front house is ready.
That's okay. The back house, is it heated and cooled? Does it have heat?
You know, it needs work, so I'm not sure that heat works.
I'm just curious about, you know, overall building coverage, lot coverage, floor area ratio for your lot. Do you, my main concern is, is there an easement on this property?
But that's a legal opinion. There are.
Did you get a title search?
There's no recorded easement. Based on my review of the title, that was that.
I have no further questions, I'll make a couple of comments.
But can I just, this ninety-two-year-old grandmother died, and he, when he was coming home, because he's been living in San Francisco, he's thirty-five, he was recently staying with his grandma, but then she died like a year and a half ago, so he's kind of wrestling with his obligations.
I understand. Did your client ever give consideration maybe selling the lot to the applicants?
Uh, he doesn't ask.
Comments? Mary, you always do a great job of trying to do your best to try and suit things into areas here. I do feel that as applicants could squeeze things down just a little bit to maybe bring that floor area ratio more in line where it could have been, you're never gonna get down to where it's eighty, eighty-one percent. You're trying to build a forever home. It's a great, it's a great potential for a great project. I agree with Mike, it's gonna be difficult to build, there's gonna be some costs there, and I'm sure your architect and planner has advised you of that, so. All in all, it looks good, but, you know, there's some massage, and I think maybe it's a little.
Thank you, Mr. Greg.
I'd like to get to the bottom of the parking problem, and now we've got testimony here that there is no easement for parking between two-oh-eight and two-ten. Do the applicants have a shared easement? Is there some kind of legal written agreement that there's parking there? Is that curb cut legal?
From everything I've seen in the file, from Mr. McGilley commissioned a title work titled stuff, there's no easement, there's no recorded easement. He was presented with no written easements, and I received a letter from Ms. Burr today on the twenty-third and three-quarter hour that she made say there's an easement by prescription, by use, but there's no court order, there's no complaint. I think it's frivolous, I will respond to it, I would counterclaim to it if it's ever brought. There is no easement.
So we just.
That's a legal opinion.
Well, as of now, no judge has.
There's gotta be a fact here somewhere, it's just opinions on everything, doesn't count, somebody's got to have the facts to this.
The fact is, Mr. Greg, there's no easement.
There may be an easement by prescription.
A what?
An easement by prescription.
That would have to be done in court though, for that to happen. There would have to be an action taken resulting in that decision, absent that, there is no easement.
Mr. Kennedy, maybe we could get some assistance from Mr. Greg.
So easements, nowadays, if you were creating an easement, you would make a very clear written agreement to get it recorded with county clerk, so everyone knows, and says, you can use my property for this, you can block it, you can, you know, if you trip and fall, you have to, you know, you can't sue, and this is the nature, and this is what you can do, this is what you can't do, and so that nowadays would be something that would be signed, noted, recorded, so that everyone in the world would know this easement exists, so it's not just as long as this neighbor gets along with this neighbor. Now, what you've also just heard is easement or by, prescriptive easement, or they sometimes call that easement by implication. That says, sometimes, the law recognizes that there might not be a written document, but it's been either in existence for thirty or forty years, or it's just been implied or prescriptive. That is for a court to decide if there is, as the chairman suggested, that's nothing anyone in this room can say. Now, the applicant may have one opinion about whether a prescriptive easement exists. Ms. Burr's client may have another, and not for us to get involved in, other than, now, Bill, you're saying that there's no recorded easement based upon the former attorney's review of the title search.
Correct.
And so now, I guess the question would be, I guess.
There's no recorded, there's no written document easement, and there has never been litigation or court order that there's a prescriptive, so there is no easement. When someone say might be or could be, or we might try to establish one, okay, have at it, but it doesn't exist.
Okay, so then, should this project get approved, we don't know if it is or not, but should it get approved, is that curb cut going away? Is the curb gonna be taken out, and is the new curb gonna be put in there with no access to the yard in that area? So there will be a legal parking place there now?
Yes, as I believe, I mean, I'm kinda jonesing lately, and I think all that testimony went in part from my rough, but I believe it's shown on the plan that the curb has moved, right, Mr. Tishuba?
Yes, half the curb cut comes out, it coincides with a four or five-foot width, that's not accessible by the.
So then, half of that.
So it could be parking.
How about the apron that's between the sidewalk and the street? There's half the aprons there, so.
We would take out half the apron out of that, if the borough wanted to take the entire out of the sidewalk.
So then it's.
We're showing a little.
That small spot, then not a parking place?
Correct, becomes a backdoor handicap.
If I may, it's not a parking space now.
Well, it shows on the street, the white lines indicating.
But a car can only fit in it if it hangs over the curb, the sidewalk.
But this, the street is blocked off, it is marked off, so you can't park there.
Correct.
So are those lines gonna be coming out, and that's gonna become a parking place?
Yeah.
Well, then it's not a handicap access either, because you couldn't, you know, wheelchair or something, you couldn't get off of a car's park.
Mr. Greg, I think she was indicating that if a half of our apron is left, you could probably leave it, the wheelchair access you chose.
But not a car's park.
But ideally, the town should treat that and complete that space, eliminate the apron on the other property as well, but that, that wouldn't be this applicant's responsibility because it's the other.
It's not their property.
Right, but, but I think.
I just wanna know if we're gaining a parking there on the street.
But I think you're bringing up your point, though, I do think that the application should give some indication as to what's gonna happen to the half the driveway that remains.
We did.
We did that very early in the application. Parking would be allowed in front of that, so by virtue of us adding and total curb cut to this lot, we're not losing space, we're purely moving it now.
But there's half of a driveway that's left, and you can't have half a driveway, so.
There's no driveway.
Not even a driveway.
It's not a driveway, it's just an apron.
Well, whatever you wanna call.
I just wanna know.
Not shared space.
The legal parking place there is not gonna be.
And there's also, to be clear, less than nine feet between the two buildings there. There's no room for legal.
There's no driveway.
Then that would be, that would be a big spot in front of the house.
And that will be cleaned up, that area, if you're ready for a few minutes, it will be cleaned up, and it will be appropriate for the structure that was there.
I'm not even sure if we're gaining a parking place or not, I'm just not happy with the way that's going. But, you know, I understand the applicant's need for the size and the type of house they're building, I certainly understand it. I think it's a want more than a need. I think there's a lot of things that could be done differently. There's probably room in the basement that you could use more effectively than storage. You know, I wanna say no to this project, but I don't see a good reason to. It's in compliance with the height, it's certainly not in compliance with the far, and I don't even know about the parking. If I vote on this thing, I don't even know what I'll vote on, on the parking. The number of variances, you know, they make a point, people made a point about how many variances there are. Every time you have a small lot, you got a ton of variances, there's no way around that, that always happens, so I'm not even concerned about that, but honestly, I think in the end, probably, I'm gonna vote for this project, but I'm not happy with this parking situation. I would like some kind of clarity, but I don't think we're gonna get it tonight. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Mr. Russ?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. I've been sitting since December at these meetings, looking at the plans, trying to figure out where you could squeeze room to make it a smaller footprint, and quite honestly, you say, oh, well, that one bedroom, you could pull in, but then you look above it, and you'd be cutting the kitchen in that, you know, it's not, I feel like the plans have been written in a way that maybe the only area is the front, and looking at it, I don't even know if you could gain like one or two feet with it still being, you know, like, I don't know what that's really gonna gain, I'm gonna scheme things, I gotta be honest with you. We talked about the number of variances, we're looking to approve six, it currently has eight. So everybody's like, wow, six variances, there's currently eight there, right now, it's seven hundred-plus square foot home. We're actually moving a couple of them to the betterment that are still existing. I mean, I'm like, Mr. Greg, when I see this, I'm like, wow, this is a lot, you know, floor ratio, it seems big, but when you're looking at it, I don't know how much better you can do. I really, I mean, and I've been studying it for the last four months, so I'm, based on that, I'm inclined to vote in favor of it. I don't like the parking situation either, I feel like if we're gonna vote in favor of this, you get one apron, you can't have two driveways, so that needs to be figured out. I like the one that you proposed, but you can't have two, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman, we're not proposing to add as a condition of any approval, there's only one, one apron, and we will agree to work with code or engineering to, you know, do whatever they desire with the curb cut and any apron.
I think it's questionable, though, what happens to the other half of that curb maybe. I mean, I understand that they have the right to fix theirs, and maybe an island with a curb that ends right there, and now there's gonna be half the driveway.
curb that ends right there, and now there's going to be half the driveway and half an apron. So what does the town, what would the town do, given that? Would they, would they ask the homeowner next door to fix that apron and fix that curb?
If you're an engineer...
Okay, now, now, one of the things that should be considered here tonight would be, if, if the neighbors amendable to it, is, is just get it done at the same time and, and let them, let, let the applicant do it on their dime. So it's, it's done nicely and it's a better job. But again, I don't think it's us to make that determination, because I think it goes beyond what we're here to decide. But I do think that the treatment of that other half of that half driveway, somebody's got to figure that out, and I hate to just pump, kick the can down the road.
Mr. Chairman, may I humbly suggest, sometimes in our heat of this, the curb cut is in the public right of life. This is not our client's property. It's not the neighbor's.
So the town, but then...
This is Belmar's property.
But, but curb cuts, the homeowners have to pay?
They will have to pay, and it will be their responsibility, but it will be the borough to determine what occurs with sidewalks and curb cuts.
But the borough would have to direct, and I don't know if they could direct the homeowner next door to, to, to repair the property of the neighbors.
We would make, we would accept the condition.
It's going to be a problem. Okay.
I don't, I don't really think it's that much of a problem.
And Mr. O'Neil, I, I, I want to leave out our, 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 our...
I'll, I'll be brief, as, as my definition, there's no contest.
Okay. That is, thank you, that's a brief, that's a good. I concur with my fellow board members. You know, this is a very complicated application. It's, it's a, it's a difficult sized lot. The, the, our predecessors in town, whenever the wisdom to allow these twenty-five foot lots to be created, someone told me they think that they subdivided fifty-foot lots into these twenty-five foot lots, created this problem for all of us, for, for the, for the board, for the town, the current homeowners, for the objectors. But again, you know, we're looking at this, and we see these twenty-five and thirty-foot lots all over the place, all over town. And the only way to move forward is, is, is to allow reasonable concessions when it comes to variances, because the original variances were associated with what was a summer bungalow, which now the property is, is tempted to be used for a year-round home. So, you know, I think this comes down to a debate over twenty by twenty square, or, or forty, four hundred square feet, which essentially is a twenty by twenty-foot room, if you will. I think that's the difference. And when that's stacked on top of a property, you know, in other words, if, if the floor area ratio were to come out of the second floor, as an example, to bring it into compliance, it wouldn't change anything regarding the footprints or the general variances that were being requested. So I, I, I just feel like, you know, both sides did a great job with this, but, but I, I tend to lean in favor of the application, so...
Yes, sure. Mr. Greg? I'm not sure how this would work, but if the town said they had to get rid of that curb cut, a small section of curb cut and apron that's on town property, would your client be willing to pay for that repairs in their neighbor's property? It's assuming it's in, it's not even your neighbor's property, it's the town's property.
Yes, he would. We'd be, like I, I posit, he'd be willing to make a condition of any approval that my client, at the behest or request or direction of the town, would, would do the work and pay for the work, or I would think that's what they want to do, they want our contractor to do.
I wouldn't want the neighbor to have to pay for that. It is the neighbor's responsibility.
And it's not even their property. We're willing to accept that, thanks.
Okay. Great, good question, Greg. Okay, so with that, Mr. Kennedy, I, I do want to say, I, I feel charged in saying this, but our second application, I don't think we'd have time tonight for the application. We, we will have a hard stop at ten, and we have to allow enough time for a... No, we have to give enough time for executive session. So, you know, that's when we allow this to run past eight fifteen, that I rejected, I mean, we're not going to be running, you know, meetings at eleven o'clock at night, eleven thirty at night. About four hours, that's one hour more than most boards do, and I don't want to run into a meeting. So, so with that, Mr. Kennedy, please sum it, sum up.
Sure.
I'm supposed to start off by saying I'll be brief, I think that's everybody's answer.
I was going to say...
Wait, hold on, guys, hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
We already have three applications lined up for April now, so I'm just letting you know that if you don't receive this one, they're going to have to wait unless you want to try to spoon them in, and not April.
All right, you know what? I apologize. I'll let the board vote on whether they want to stay late tonight. Okay? Guys, could you get back whoever left, if there's any, anyone else who left? I'll, I'll allow it up to a board vote. Okay. So all in favor of staying and hearing the next application?
Yes.
Okay, so we got yeses, I'm outvoting, I'm a no, but we're outvoting, so we're going to stay.
No.
Okay. Bill Schrecker's on the call, right?
Okay. I gave it, I gave it a shot, guys, to try to end on time. If everyone's in favor of staying, I am not going to be overruled. All right, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, so first of all, as you indicated, I, I do congratulate all the attorneys and the witnesses, because this was a tough, intense, emotional hearing, and you could feel the emotion in a lot of the witnesses, and we appreciate that. And we like the fact that people are emotionally and physically invested in the properties, whether you're for this application or against it. That's what makes Belmar great, because people are emotionally invested, and you like that. So in summation, so this application needs the floor area variant, floor area ratio variance and some bulk variance relief. And you've heard, well, there's some different standards for the FAR variance and for the bulk variance. So some of the standards, it's not a lecture or a speech on, on, on the standards, but some of the, the comments that we heard tonight and some of the standards, we talked about in terms of the FAR, can the property accommodate the proposal notwithstanding the non-ad compliant FAR? We also heard about some of the special reasons that have to be associated with that. Typically, you know, the concept are, this is property, whether it's, does it advance some special reasons, some purposes of municipal land you saw, that's sometimes called a positive criteria. Again, that, some of that, the basic ones include, is it an appropriate use of development in a manner which promotes the public health and safety and welfare? Is it providing adequate light, air and open space? Does approval establish an appropriate population density which will contribute to the well-being of persons? Is there sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses? Is this a desirable visual environment? That's just some of them. Again, this is, you know, we, this is not to be a lecture on this, because we heard lots of different talks on it. We also have the negative criteria, which means the applicant has to prove that the application can be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good. We heard a lot about that tonight. And we also heard in terms of the bulk variance standards, as we know, either it's a C1, meaning it's a hardship, not economic hardship, but hardship with regard to the land, the narrowness, the shallowness, the, the shape of the lot, those types of things. Or what we sometimes call flexible C2, do the, do the benefits of approval outweigh, or benefits of the application outweigh the detriment? So those are the general standards. Again, very, and, and sometimes with the bulk variances, sometimes they're subsumed into use variances, but we'll get into that later on. So those are the general standards. And there hasn't been a real great debate as opposed to has, with respect to those legal standards. I mean, pretty much everyone agrees that those are the standards. But, but the difference is, and what the difference of opinion becomes on, is your job to apply the facts of this case to those standards. And that's what we had a very significant difference of opinion on. And for the friends, or for the people in here and the public, and this might be your first experience with the Belmar zoning board, I know we had a Fairhaven zoning board, regular time tonight. This is what this board does on every single application. The intense scrutiny and the intense debate and analysis that you're going through tonight is what they do on every single application. Most of the time, not as intense with, with, with this, but this is what you do, and I applaud that, and that's why you have the great community that, that you have here in Belmar. And I encourage members of the public to come back, because this is your government in action. So now, I know a lot of people, there were comments about, you know, the attorneys, stop asking that, move quicker, why are you doing this? And again, we all do things differently. The hard job, attorneys have a hard job, and I think Mr. Shiper's and Mr. McLeary and Ms. Burris did a very outstanding job tonight. They had different opinions, different strategies, and I think they all, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have all done the same thing different, and saw three different styles tonight, and, and that, that's totally fine, and that's a good thing. Just a couple of real quick things. I know there was some comments about year-round renters and owners, and everything is, is, you know, all relative, but we always state that, you know, and, and I think Mr. O'Malley, you said this, underlying every aspect is, we can't discriminate against renters, and we don't, but that's always important to say. I also want to say, we talked about this a little earlier, the burden is on the applicant. The applicant has the burden of proving to you that they satisfy the, the standards. And it's not the objectors to prove to you that it shouldn't, it's the applicant's burden to prove to you that they've met that burden. We've talked about the number of variances, and I think Chuck, you made, you made a good point. You know, we don't get too concerned about the number of variances. We typically get concerned about the impact of the variances, because one, ill-advised or ill-conceived variance could have much more of an impact than, you know, a lot more variances. So again, not so much the number, but the impact, the overall picture. I mean, Mr. McLeary talked about, you know, the, the, you know, you consider everything. Now, I know there was some talk about, there were some comments about parking, and maybe you don't understand the parking, it needs more information, and were the driveway details need more information? Let me just say this for the record, if you feel you need more information, the answer is probably continue and get more information, if that's what you feel.
Mr. Kennedy, I think we settled that.
Got it.
Where the application, the term...
That last condition.
If approved, would say the applicant has agreed to pay the cost of repairs to the owner, and curb, and store it back through the property division, according to the town, and then the town would have to provide that permission and inform the homeowner that that, that work is being done, you know, that the homeowners has some, some rights, you're too relative to the property on their property.
Got that. And then the final things are, just remember, this is a D variance for the FAR, so only seven people vote tonight, but you need five affirmative yes votes for this to pass. So unlike a lot of other times, let's just say it was four people said yes and three people said no, that vote would not pass, because you need five affirmative yes votes. And then I have written down some of the potential conditions that we've talked about from the very first hearing all through tonight. Some that we talked about explicitly, some that we applied. If the application's going to be voted down, we don't read them. If there's a request that I cite, recite the conditions, I'll do that, but I defer to Mr. Chairman.
You know what? I apologize, guys, about the other case. I'm going to do the same with this. I'll put it to a vote in the board. Would you like him to read the conditions prior to our vote?
We're going to finalize those in the, the final resolution?
No.
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 So then it would just be, for generic sense, the conditions are, complies with all the promises and commitments and representations that, that the team made throughout the public hearing process. And I guess just the, the only things that I would want to just focus on is, I think sometimes with the, with the, that parking situation and the easement, alleged easement, non-easement, I just think we would need to say, that's not a zoning board issue, that's an applicant, a neighbor issue.
We are proceeding with the assumption there is no easement, and we're voting based on that assumption, because that was what was attested to, to us tonight.
And that is the, that's my summation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So with that, put it up for, I'm going to vote in favor of the application. Mr. Greg, I'm sorry. Mr. Ross, thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. O'Malley?
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Blango?
Yes.
Mr. Mubin?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill? All right. We'll try to move this along, Mr. and Mrs. Lopez.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Sorry, I was about to steal your truck.
I'll send you the post.
Mr. Chairman, there's an unwritten rule if our run out of paper, meaning that...
Your, your legal pad exceeded the block. Or, or I can see the legal... You need a legal pad. Yes, exactly. I thought it was going to be one legal pad. I know you can't predict, but in the future, probably hearing them first, we've been logically, I anticipated that that was going to take three hours.
Will you guys be able to walk there?
Really? Sorry, saving.
You can switch it up if you want.
Right, let's, let's take a look at that in the future, because I, I don't want to put the applicants through having to wait and go through that torture. I apologize, that was my fault. I, I should have asked the board, and I was making a decision based on, on prior discussions we had about hard stop at ten. And that's unwritten rule. I mean, that's the way most towns operate. Ten o'clock, you're out the door. Right, Mr. Chairman?
I know, I was just going to say, we're off to our period, and it just, as a practical matter, at the last meeting, all three attorneys seemed to suggest not a lot, not a lot, not a lot. So if, based upon what people had said, we would not have expected...
I certainly did not expect that to be three hours. It was actually over three hours.
We can go, we can go for a record on this one.
Sure.
Yep.
We just vote?
Yep.
Can I think about what the shorts must say?
I think it's one of those.
I think we'll call again. Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Greg?
Here.
Mr. O'Malley?
President.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Blango?
Here.
Mr. Mubin?
Here.
Mr. Diorio?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here. So a good comment I'll make, and just apologize to the board members for dismissing or suggesting that we weren't going to hear this application tonight, that's on me. And then if anyone chooses not or can't stay, especially if we have a multer present, they'd always have the right to leave the child, but I don't have, I don't have to get home tonight. So I don't have to leave, but if I did, we just look up the altar and sit. Okay, great. Thanks, guys, I hope you accept my apology.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is Leonardo and Roberto Lopez's application, 419 Sixth Avenue. First up, is there anyone here who have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice? Seeing none, I don't see any, right? The board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it'll be my opinion, and we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And then next up, we're going to mark in the record what we as a board have before us. A1 is a development application, and that's dated November 28, 2022. A2 is the modern land use zoning permit with detachment, and that's dated November 12, 2022 slash November 1, 2022. A3 are the architectural plans prepared by Mary Hearn and B. Hearn Architecture, and it's dated October 18, 2022, consisting of six pages. We're going to swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you're the zoning officer and construction official of Borough Belmar. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent provided, to the truth, best your knowledge, help you guide?
I do.
Okay. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for staying. If you could just state your names, and we're going to swear all three of you. And if you could state your name, please?
Roberto Lopez.
Okay, and address?
419 Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
Leonardo Lopez. 419 Sixth Avenue.
And you both are the applicants, correct?
Yes.
And Mary Hearn, for the record?
Mary Hearn, West Sartre, 1007 Sweet B Lane Street, Belmar.
Okay. Good evening to all of you. If you could all raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best your knowledge, help you guide?
Yes.
Okay, all three witnesses have been sworn. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Lopez, just for the record, we're talking about 419 Sixth Avenue. Are you all the owners of that property?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it properly?
January 2022.
January 2022. And is there, my notes suggest that there's a single-family home at that site?
Yes.
And do you live there?
Yes.
Okay. And either you, I know this proposal is about an addition, and either you can talk to the board about it, or you can have your sworn architect. I don't want to say anything.
Dear, um, 2022, Farm Pringles, the North Belmar. We are planning to retire here, probably in the next ten, fifteen years. And we want to give all the pieces of equipment to the home. It's eight years old, it's very compartmentalized. So we just wanted to be a better looking space for our family.
I'm happy to take over. Hi. So I don't know if I can enter photo board in?
Sure. We are up to A4, and A4 is what?
A photo board of nine photos on the front and six on the back of the subject property.
Okay, and those photos were taken?
My office.
And roughly when?
Yesterday.
So I can guess that there's an accurate depiction of what it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here tonight hoping to make improvements to the home. The home is small. It has, it's two-story now. The first floor has a kitchen, a family, a dining room, a very small mudroom, a half bath, and a small sunroom. There's also a quirky vestibule in the front that has its own walls. It's very compartmentalized. The kitchen is so small, the refrigerator's in the pantry outside of the kitchen. We just would like to take down walls inside and open it up on the first floor. On the second floor, there are four bedrooms that are small. Three are decent, one is very small. They each have closets that hangers don't even fit in. So all the closets are non-functional. There are two baths on that level. What we would love to do is add a half-story for the master suite and move the master suite upstairs and reuse the three good bedrooms on the second floor and provide proper closets for them and two bathrooms there. We'd also like to add a small laundry room on the second floor. The laundry's in the basement, we're in a flood zone. We're trying to bring this flood compliant, FEMA compliant. And we'd like to put a very small 45-square-foot addition on the back of the home for a mechanical room for that same purpose, to bring the mechanicals up out of the basement and put them on the first floor. We're here because there are an awful lot of pre-existing non-conformities that we would be continuing, and a couple exacerbations. We're a corner lot, so we have the hardship of two front setbacks. We're also an undersized lot. The lot is 4,408 square feet in the R75 zone, in which a corner lot is required to be 9,000 square feet. So we're about half of the required size for the lot. Another encumbrance is there's a shared garage that straddles the rear property line now. It's a detached garage. We'd like to continue that, keep it. We don't want to offend the neighbors in the back. And we'd like to provide more parking on our property to better comply with the requirements of the ordinance. So if it's okay with you, I'll walk you through the floor plans real quick, and then I'll go through the chart. So you can see. It's back here. On sheet two of six, I don't mean to keep it from the audience, but on sheet two of six, you can see the existing first floor plan and the proposed first floor plan. We're, just would like to add this mechanical room at the back, and we'd like to add an exterior shower. Other than that, the footprint is identical, but we want to open up the inside. We would like to rebuild the porch in its same footprint. Second floor, if you want to go to the next sheet, you can see on the left, there are four bedrooms at corners. There's a bath at the back and a bath at the front. And if you see, the closets are miniscule, long and narrow. Just really not usable. There's a stair going to an unfinished attic that we'd like to remove. That's off to the right. And then build a new stair over the stair in the middle up to the new habitable attic, half-story. You can see on the right, the three bedrooms at corners would remain. Sorry, I'm not trying to exclude you. And then provide two bathrooms, one private on that level and one shared at the back. And then in the front, sneak in that small laundry room and bring that up out of the basement where that bathroom is now. And then the next sheet would be the proposed half-story master suite. So there is an attic there now, it's very shallow. And there's a stair going to it. We'd like to remove the roof, build a steeper roof, and build a master suite up in that space. This is, the next sheet are the elevations. This is what the house looks like now. The top, it's stucco. It's actually a clay wall. The walls are not wood, they're not masonry block, they're clay. So we have to honor those openings, try not to move any of the openings in what we're building new. We'd like to take down this porch that's very enclosing and just build a new, more open porch with a balcony above it. A steeper roof line to accommodate that master suite up on the half-story. And then this would be the east side elevation, not the other front. If you go to the next sheet, you'll see the other front off to the left. This is the west side elevation. This is what it looks like now at the top, all stucco for the chimney. This is what it would look like if we're approved tonight with the steeper roof. We would, I didn't mention this, there's a full-blown chimney we'd like to replace with a gas fireplace, so that we can cut that chimney down and provide the egress in that master. We would direct then the new fireplace. Again, all the fenestration, all the windows that exist, we're keeping, replacing, but the whole, trying to protect those openings. And then on the right of that sheet is the rear elevation at the top, existing, and what it would look like if we're able to build the new. So you see that steeper roof line? And this is the portion of the addition, that one-story, 45-square-foot addition for the mechanical room behind the new exterior shower. That's the house in general. I'll give you square footages and variances. So on our cover sheet, under zoning data, the existing gross livable area is 2,098 square feet on two floors. At the very bottom of that lot, so the proposed gross livable is 2,649 square feet on two and a half floors. And then the chart is right up in the middle. The lot area pre-exists at 4,408 square feet. That would remain. Not a new variance, just a pre-existing condition. Lot frontage, we're fine. Well, actually, we're not using the corner. We're 50-foot wide where 60 is required, not being changed. The building coverage existing is 37.3%. We're proposing 38.9%. We're 30s allowed. That's the 45 square feet for the addition and a very small outside shower. It's a difference of 74 square feet. And that proposed addition is only one story. Impervious coverage, we meet the requirement, 45.6 now, 53.3 proposed, 55 allowed. Floor area ratio, 43.8 existing, 54.5 proposed, 75s allowed. We're not seeking either an impervious coverage or floor area ratio variance. On-site parking, there's one space now that's in the garage. And the amount of driveway that we have now, you can see on this cover sheet, off to the right is the existing. That's not illegal with parking space. We would love to widen the driveway to accommodate two cars before the garage. That would offer us the three parking spaces required for four-bedroom house. Again, it's existing four-bedroom. If approved, it will be four-bedroom in the end.
I'm sorry, say it again, now it's four-bedroom?
Yes. Four-bedroom now, proposed four-bedroom.
Okay, and what about bathrooms?
There are two and a half now, we're proposing three and a half.
Thank you.
The added master on the half-story. Again, there's one parking space legally now, where we would propose three, where three would be required. Then there are some setback issues, and they're mainly due to the corner lot situation. The front yard setback on Sixth is 19.6 existing. We're proposing 19.6. When we continue anything up, we trigger that variance, even though you're already there. So we have to seek that variance where 20 feet's required. Front yard setback, Sixth Avenue to the porch, it exists at 10.4 feet. We would propose to rebuild that in the identical footprint at 10.4 feet, and 12 foot's required. Front yard setback to D Street for the house is 4.5 feet. You see that to the left, to the right, where the sunroom shuts out. We do have a pretty wide driveway, so when you drive by, it's hard to believe it's only 4 and 1/2 feet from the property line. I put in that the proposed addition, again, if we're allowed to go up, the addition at that side would be at 14.7. We're not proposing to build on top of the sunroom. So only over the main body of the house, on the D Street side.
It's a sunroom will remain, right?
Yes, yes.
So I don't see how that, how that doesn't stay the same then?
Well.
Why you're showing it as proposed is a greater setback when the setback actually is not changing at all?
Because I'm required 20 in everything new that I build. And by building over the main box of the house, I'm only going to be 14.7 off of D.
Yeah, but you're actually going to be 4.5.
The 4.5 exists for the one-story sunroom, that would remain. But we still would need to seek a variance if we build the half-story extension up within 20 feet of D, and we would be doing that. It's semantics, but I think we need to seek that variance.
It's approving a pre-existing condition is what I think we're really doing.
Well, and extending.
We're not approving, it's harder. I understand the topic, but the actual setback is 4.5, not 10.4. But anyway, I get it, I understand.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the front yard setback, D Street to the porch, applies. The rear yard setback exists at 33.3. If we're allowed this addition, we would be extending that to the side, but at the same depth, at 33.3, but 40s required. Again, we're in the R75 zone, the assumption is this lot's at least 100 feet deep. It's not, it's 88.17 feet deep. So we're seeking that variance for that small one-story addition for the rear yard setback. Side yard setback, same thing on the other side that we just talked about on the corner. On the east side, we're 2.2 feet off the property line. If we're allowed to continue up that half-story, we have to seek that same variance. We made a point of recessing the window in, so that I'm allowed a window, would not be allowed a window at 2.2. But we want it, we want a window in that bathroom if we're approved. So we've made a point of recessing the window in to allow natural light. And obviously, we'd have to meet any fire requirements. There's going to be fire rating on that side, so. And then the total side yards is not applicable on a corner lot. The building height now is 30.3 feet. We're proposing 35, not seeking a variance. We're proposing two and a half stories, where we're two stories now. We meet the definition. You're allowed 60%. We're actually only at 50% on the half-story. Side yard setback and rear yard setback to the existing detached garage would go unchanged. And when we put in a new driveway, we would be made to hold it a foot off the property line. But here, that would be a detriment to our neighbor to the south. So we'd like to not have to provide a one-foot grass strip between their very narrow driveway and what we'd be using now. So we're seeking that one foot of variance.
The garage remains, and it's a shared structure?
Correct.
That explains why the eight-foot line is.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 pre-existing non-conformities.
I'm sorry, say it again.
12 pre-existing non-conformities. One, two, three, four, five of those remain. And one, two, three, four, five, six are being extended up or made slightly worse in only the building coverage. Again, that went from 37.3 to 38.9, where 30% is allowed.
But the footprint and setback is not changing because it pre-existed with the current structure?
The distance to the rear property line, but the footprint does get slightly bigger in the back.
Right, because of the utility room?
For the utility room. So the hope is to bring the laundry up out of the basement, the mechanicals up out of the basement, render the first floor much more usable, render all the closets on the second floor much more usable, and gain a viable master suite on the half-story. The entire exterior skin would be completely replaced. And we'd like to put in a patio on the site. You can see that, again, under the impervious coverage restriction, keeping access to crawl. And that's the end of the testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, I guess we can open for board questions now. We'll start on this end. Actually, we'll start with Mr. O'Neal.
No, I think the design looks good. I don't have any question.
Mr. Ross?
I don't think I have a question either.
Mr. Craig? Do you want your neighbors to know about the driveway situation that you're going to be paving with semi-impervious pavers right up to their property line? Have you told them?
Yes, so it's two brothers that live there, and their mother owns the house. So the way we are now is that shared entry, and then it doesn't really fit the cars. So there's like a mud pit on either side. So he approached me saying he wanted to extend cement on his side. cement on his side, and I want to do the same on my side. And I told him we had plans that I would be putting pavers if he wanted to try to match them. And we did them, or so I reached out to his mother to discuss that. She promised to do what I want on my side and then on the other side.
So, he's going concrete up to your pavers?
They are now.
They're concrete now, yeah.
Okay. That's what I got for you. Mr. O'Neal.
Is there, just talk to me briefly about the garage. There's a biding wall and two of two.
I remember that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's two-by-fours with the plywood, you know?
It's a cool house. I know. It's in my neighborhood. And Mary, you said, um, remains stucco or?
No, no, we're going to replace it.
Over?
No.
Okay. All right, cool.
I really don't want to mess with the wall. I want to leave it intact if I can.
Mr. Martin. Uh, no questions? Mr. O'Neal, nothing. Mr. Diorio, no questions? It's more a curiosity than anything else. How do you work out the garage in terms of, is there some sort of agreement between your neighbor relative to if the new roof has to go on or the, you know, the electric that feeds to it, you know, whatever it might be? It's just an odd situation where you've got a shared garage with your neighbor.
Right. That's, we had the house, I assume the property line got moved.
Well, you got no documents on, on that shared use situation? Like, you can paint it red, and you can paint your side blue, and that kind of stuff, right?
Well, we bought the house on the wire, so there should be something written, maybe to search, or no, he's in this right thing. So, we just wrote up a document saying we can't block by the person from getting to a parking space. But there's nothing about people's garage colors or-
Interesting. Some weird situations like that.
Especially after the last application.
It seems like a bad law to let them-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, people share a garage, and the roof is leaking, hard for the-
The driveway.
Mary, did you say this house?
Oh, my God.
Funny, you know, we knew we were playing block. It's stuck on the top of the block. I don't, I don't have any questions, so we're going to close the board question section, open up to, to public comment, public question. Anyone here speak on this application this evening? Just in support.
All right. Come on forward and state your name, please.
My name is Ciro Scalera, and I live at 602 D Street.
And I'm sorry, how do you spell Ciro?
C-I-R-O.
And Scalera?
S-C-A-L-B-E-R-A. My wife, Maureen Scalera.
All right. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for staying this late night. Do you both swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provided would be the truth, best your knowledge, and help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do. We're here as neighbors from our house, our front yard. You can see Roberto's house. We've known them not very well, so in that sense, we're kind of objectors. It's not like they're like old friends. We're, we're neighbors, and we've actually hosted and had other neighbors a couple of times, and that's kind of where I met Rio and Roberto. We're aware of their plans that were reviewed here tonight, and we really don't have any objection to what they're proposing to do. It's an old house like our house, don't, you know, turn of the century, and we think that this will, you know, actually improve the way the house looks and the appearance in the neighborhood, and we support it.
Do you have anything to add? Thank you so much for your comments.
And we know Greg and Mike, who they share the garage.
And just remember, turn of the century, right?
They're in the middle.
Just remember, turn of the century means it was built in 1999. Turn of the lots.
Well, turn of the last century.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, anyone else from the public here in comment?
Hi, Jay McDermott, 515-6. I live down the street.
Hello, Mr. McDermott. Good evening and welcome back to the zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provided would be the truth, best your knowledge, and help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
I, too, I've had the pleasure of working with Mary on my house down the street. I know the work she does is terrific. I think the plan certainly enhances the use of the home for you. I think aesthetically on the outside, it's going to be much more attractive. I certainly think that there's a lot of pre-existing conditions you're dealing with in terms of variances that you can't really work around. I think the changes that are proposed, mechanical closet, other minor changes really aren't going to impede the look of the home, the neighborhood. So, in light of that, I certainly endorse the, uh, the application and wish you luck.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay. So, if there's no one else from the public, we'll close the public session and open up for board comment. We're starting on this end. No comments.
No, I think Mr. McDermott did a good job in saying what I was thinking.
Which is, I wrote everything down that he said.
Did he practice?
I think he's done it before.
No, I, I agree. I think everything here is, uh, minimalist changes, and it'll improve the appearance and usefulness of the home, and I'd be favored application.
I'm just going to say, it's, it's interesting how things change and the needs of the home change, and it looks like a good job, and I'm in favor of it.
Great house in my neighborhood.
Good.
Yellow, I don't know. Now, well done. It's nice. And this is nice, rather fresh air. I know there's some other neighbors in here that could have stood up, but they know.
Mr. Migno.
Yes, I think it's a nice design. I happen to build your neighbor's house behind you, and I think that this corner, once you get it done, we'll finish the whole block.
Great. I think it's, uh, just a, a minimal and very good use in order to modernize it.
Yes, I have no issues. And now I found out who owns the garage. My wife and I walk by there, we're two blocks from you, three blocks away. We always said, "Who owns that garage?" Now we know you both own it.
Well, I'm certainly glad that we stayed.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I, I didn't realize it was going to be such a simple application and, uh, well, people here in the audience that we were going to have a long drawing application, but I was wrong. So, again, I apologize about 10 times for that. I just do it once more. I, I think that, you know, there's certain houses, you've got a lot of variances here, but they're all pre-existing for the most part. And the one that you're changing, or one or two that you're changing is extremely minor changes. So, I don't see why anyone would possibly oppose what you're doing. I, I think it's going to dress up that, that corner or that property. It's going to look great. It's going to get you a couple more parking spots, which I know you need badly. And I, I just really look forward to seeing what the house looks like once all the walls are done. So, I'm certainly in favor of the application. I'll make a motion. Do we want to summarize first?
Real briefly. If the application's approved, it complies with all the promises and tenements and representations that you made tonight, complying to the applicable housing regulations, FEMA regulations, grading and drainage details to be reviewed and approved by the Borough Engineer. We typically have a 24-month shelf life on these approvals from adoption of the resolution within which building permits are to be obtained, complying with the Building and Construction Code. Ted, a lot of times we have an exterior shower. Sometimes don't we have to say it has to be connected to? No?
Okay.
Compliance with the ADA regulations. We had, uh, Mary Hearn's had fire rating on the side as required, comply with the half-story ordinance, semi-pervious pavers for the driveway. And with the shared garage, we just always say, hey, we encourage people to, you know, get that better, better agreement. And then, totally irrelevant, but I'm going to say you apparently have awesome, awesome neighbors because not everyone would come to an objection, but very few neighbors would come and stay four hours and speak in favor of the application. So, for what it's worth, I think you've got some great neighbors. That's it.
Mr. Chairman. Good. All right. So, who's making the motion? I'll make that motion. All right. All right.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Migno?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Yes.
Mr. Loubret?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Broke the door.
Thank you.
That's too good.
Thank you.
Kick it a bunch, right?